This meeting in about one minute. We're gonna start this meeting. All right, let's open this meeting up. All right, welcome everyone to San Rafael City Schools Board Meeting on January thirteenth. And bienvenidos a todos a la reunión de Mesa de Gobernador es al enero el trece de dos mil veinticinco. We have no, nothing to report from our reportable items and I would love an approval of the agenda. Pledge of Allegiance, okay. Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen, would you like to ring me your name?
I'm James.
James, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Morena. All right. Now I'm gonna ask for approval of the agenda. All right, now can I have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All right, moved by trustee Isa and second by, didn't you have a mark? Trustee, do you have a mark? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Okay. The board will, I'm just gonna remind everyone that the board will take public comments either at the beginning of the meeting about items not on the tonight's agenda or about items that are on tonight's agenda when the items, item is open for discussion. If you are in the boardroom, you may submit your comments on the blue form that's over there in the right. And if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. And we will first take public comments for people in the room and then secondly from people on Zoom. También si la gente tiene algo que decir pueden levantar la mano en el Zoom o aquí pueden tener un papel azul que pueden poner su nombre y decir los detalles. Okay, and también si necesitan que esté en español la junta tenemos alguien que puede hacer todo en español para ustedes nada más tienen que levantar la mano o ayudar a preguntar por asistencia. Okay, so resolutions tonight, we have three resolutions. So we have resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, three, three, in support and recognition of Black History Month for February twenty twenty five.
Hi, good evening, board of trustees and Deputy Superintendent Markucci. I have, as trustee Martin mentioned, three resolutions for you this evening. I'd like to start with resolution twenty four, twenty five, dash, thirty three in support and recognition of Black History Month in February. San Rafael City Schools would like to recognize that during the month of February, the citizens of the United States celebrate Black History Month and the actions, words, and achievements of so many African Americans who contributed to the success and prosperity of the United States. San Rafael City Schools Board of Education encourages educators, students, and families to learn about Black History Month and about the history, the heritage and achievements of African American people through programs and activities that reflect Black History Month. Staff is recommending that our board adopt this resolution and to honor Black History Month and recognize the tremendous contributions made by African Americans in the United States.
Thank you so much for bringing this forward. Any comments from our trustees? And I'll start with our newest trustee, trustee Rotis.
Like the part that you said to acknowledge the work that African Americans have done to in the, in the midst of prosperity and a flourishing of this country, that's what I would like to acknowledge.
Um, thank you. Yes, I am. I also am really excited because you know, these resolutions in general are like, we've said it over time and time again, is to opportunities to highlight and connect. And so with our student trustees present, I'm really looking forward to hearing how our schools, if they have affinity groups that are present, like I know that some of our schools have black student unions. If there are any events on their campus in partnership and celebration of Black History Month of, I know that I would love an invitation, our board would be love to have an update at the next meeting because it's, it's a month of acknowledgement, but it's really celebration of the diversity and then, and, and the work of not just those nationally recognized, but also our, our students and our community members too. So, thank you for bringing the resolution forward.
Thank you, trustee Dinamah Marsh.
Yeah, thank you for bringing the resolution forward. I don't have a lot to add to that outside of what the trust, other trustees have added, but this is an important resolution, thank you.
Yes, I just wanna echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you so much for bringing this forward, it's very important. And if there are events coming up, we'd love to know. And so, thank you so much for bringing this resolution forward. I would need board approval for this resolution.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty four, twenty five, dash, thirty three in support and recognition of Black History Month, February twenty twenty five.
Thank you, do I have a second? Second. All right, moved by trustee Rotis, second by trustee Dinamah Marsh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, that motion passes. Thank you so much for bringing that forward.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we have a second resolution for your approval. It's resolution twenty four, twenty five, dash, thirty four to proclaim January twentieth as Martin Luther King Junior Day. And as we all know, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior is a historical icon with deep roots in social justice and civil rights in this country. Dr. King was a champion of nonviolence, fervently advocating nonviolent resistance as a strategy to end segregation and racial discrimination in, in the United States. He was the youngest person to be awarded the Nobel Peace Prize and he was instrumental in the passage of the Civil Rights Act and Voting Rights Act in the nineteen sixties. The staff recommends that the board adopt this resolution to declare January twentieth as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day and encourages participation in annual tributes with appropriate programs and activities.
Thank you so much for bringing this resolution forward. Any comments from again trustees?
I look forward to participating in whatever it entails to, you know, further keep, keep alive the story of Dr. King. I know I grew up learning about him and it's great to see the work that he has done for this nation and to still continue keeping the legacy story.
Thank you, trustee Rotis, trustee Dinamah Marsh.
Same similar, thank you for bringing forth this resolution. Again, that invitation to our, our students and our school families, school families, our school communities that have events centered around it. Granted, you know, we have, we hear the saying that it's not a day off, it's a day on of service. And so, for example, in that connection and spirit of community, for example, our neighbors in Marin City are uplifting their day of remembrance and celebration. So that's an opportunity point to celebrate Martin Luther King Junior in, in, in community altogether. So, thank you for bringing forth the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I, I do like the, the idea and to remember that it's not just a day off, but to take a moment, pause during that day and understand what this is about. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Yes, I just wanna echo what my colleagues have said and I do appreciate that it's a day of remembrance, not a day of sad. Thank goodness for Dr. Martin Luther King and all he's brought to our country. So, thank you so much for bringing this resolution forward, I really appreciate the time. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty four, twenty five, dash, thirty four to proclaim January twentieth as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Second?
I second the motion.
All right, moved by trustee Rotis, second by trustee Kerner, all in favor? Aye. That motion passes. Okay, we have a third resolution.
We do, and this one is new to the district. I believe this is the first time we're bringing this resolution. And this is for your approval of resolution twenty four, twenty five, dash, thirty five to proclaim January twenty seventh International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And the United Nations designated January twenty seventh as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators. And the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity for us to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments and to remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. This annual day of remembrance has been set aside for San Rafael City Schools in memory of the victims of the Holocaust in order to further educate generations to help prevent future acts of genocide and to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. So staff is recommending the board adopt this resolution to declare January twenty seventh as International Holocaust Remembrance Day.
Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you for bringing the resolution forward. I, I have a lot of Jewish friends and I have learned a bunch about what happened during World War Two and the things that followed. And I look forward to hopefully passing this resolution.
Same similar, and also in the spirit of invitation of our student affinity groups. I know that some of our school campuses also have Jewish student identifying groups. So if there are opportunities to support, you know, I know it's just the Holocaust, it's not just the Holocaust Remembrance Day, there are efforts and education and, and, and celebration of diversity in the work throughout the year. And so, those different groups, community groups and students that are led, and invitation is always open. And so, thank you for bringing forth this resolution.
Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you so much, and yes, we stand in unity with all of our, you know, individuals that remember Holocaust and the, the impact that that had. So thank you so much for bringing this forward. And who like to make a motion?
I move.
Three for three? No, she's hitting, just hit. Go ahead, trustee. All right, move by trustee Kerner.
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Isa. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Okay, before we get into presentations, I did wanna say, I wanna thank Mr. Markucci for his leadership today. Our superintendent is out sick and so I wanted to recognize, thank you for, you know, holding the helm today or whatever the saying is, so thank you.
Honored to sit and see.
Yeah, thank you for joining us today. All right, and now we have a presentation, Laurel Duggan.
Thought I was going at six thirty. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Nice to see you all.
Yes. Hopefully your garden is doing well.
Our garden is doing pretty good.
Oh, that's good.
For asking and it will continue to get better. I will highlight some of the things we're gonna be doing as well in the future. So, it's something that brings joy.
Oh, thank you.
Right behind you then, one of those times.
Thank you.
All right, so members of the board, guests. My name is Jimmy Lopez, Principal of Lauradel Elementary School. And I'm happy to be here today to pretty much share some highlights and some information, some details about what's going on at our school. And I hope that this would give you some ideas of what we're doing, right? And what we are striving to do better in your future. Uh, next. So for clarity, we're gonna go into our numbers and that's just pretty much our school information. I'm here, the principal, and as you can see, that, that's pretty much the breakdown that we have at, at school. Thirteen classroom teachers, twelve of them are housed at Lauradel. One of them works, the TK teacher works at Early Learning Center at Shore School, starting this year. So, yeah, we do have twelve classroom teachers there and plenty of wonderful people that do so much for our students. And as you can tell, I'm not gonna read all those things to you, you can just go ahead in terms of all the different supports that our students have at LD. Now, when you talk about demographics, that's pretty much the breakdown that we have around our school, those are the numbers. And why is that important? Because those numbers, that's what is at center, at the center of our work. That's why we do what we do every day at school. When you look at the number of students, the different groups that we have, the socioeconomic disadvantage, Hispanic Latino, English learners, which happens to be two of the most in terms of numbers. And our student with disabilities, we have about eight point two percent of our students have IP something like that. Next. Now, once again, why is that I took the time, we took the time to look at those numbers? Because at school, what we do is all of it in terms of what I chose to highlight for today's presentation was CIPS goal number one. Our school plan for student achievement, it's all about student success. And it aligns perfectly with everything that the district wants in terms of when are students to come out of our, our classrooms, when they graduate from high school and beyond, right? So it is aligned with District LPAC and SRCS together twenty twenty four goal one point one, which as a district, and Lauradel is part of the district, we want to ensure that every student experiences a learning environment that is both nurturing and engaging. And they eventually will develop those necessary skills to meet the challenges of the world as we know it nowadays, very, very different. So for some context, data, data is pretty much what drives our instruction. And as you can tell, I want you to, obviously you're gonna see all of that, but I want you to pay attention to the left and the right. We're gonna go back to the middle, that's our math scores. But I wanna highlight on language arts, the incredible amount of progress that we have made from last year to this, from twenty twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four in terms of how many points we have increased for our SBAQ scores. And I actually do have some numbers since I took the time to look at how many of our population happen to be English language learners and Hispanics. And it is that our English language learners, four point nine points increase from one year to this year. Our Hispanics as a population have gone seven point nine percent percentage points and our students' economic disadvantage have also gone up eight point eight percent. Now, when you look at your, the scores on the right, those are the scores from our LPAC examination and that's a test that pretty much is used to measure the English language development in our students that are classified as English language learners. And we have also made a pretty good progress when it comes to making sure that our students are moving at least one proficiency level a year. That is at seven point one percent and which was during the school year, twenty two, twenty three was at forty eight point six. Now we're at fifty five point seven and we are trying to do as much as we can to make sure that our English language learners and for that matter, all our students have the opportunities that they deserve by developing language. Now, what does our current data show regarding progress towards the CIPS goal? Now, we know that our students need to be in the classroom so they can learn. And chronic absenteeism, as we know, is something that we're dealing with as a district in terms of making sure that our students are there. So, from the year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, we had a twenty two point two percent in students that were chronically absent. That is more than ten percent of the school year that they were not there. Now, last year, and that's the kind of number that you wanna see declining, right? So, we declined ten point six percent. So we're now at eleven point six. I wish I could take all the credit, I'm not gonna do that. Obviously, I'm just a small part of what we do at school. And it's the staff, teachers reminding students and parents that they need to be there, you know, every day, on time. That's something that we're working on this year as well. Our incredible office staff, they do amazingly when it comes to making phone calls. We have done some home visits, making sure that students, we know, we learn about what is keeping them from being at school. So that's something that we want to continue and hopefully those numbers are gonna go down even more, they're gonna decline more. Next. Now, what are we currently excited about regarding the goal number one, student success at Lauradel? We're trying, obviously, the alignment is a big, a big deal for all of us in terms of rate level collaboration. And more importantly, as a school, we wanna be aligned with the district. So, taking on the values that we have about equity, community, and joy. When it comes to equity, by having clear alignment in our grade level collaboration, teachers are pretty much lockstep on what they need to be offering our students so they can learn better. Now, in terms of community, all the different systems of support that we have for our students and their families, the, you know, home visits, phone calls, and things like that, they facilitate student learning for sure. And lastly, thank you for your question about the garden. Now, our kinders are gonna start pretty soon, in about two weeks, with a new pilot program. Gardening has been a pretty big deal at Lauradel during the after-school program. So now this year, we were able to get a grant so we can offer the same opportunities to our students during the day school. We're gonna start with kinder, hopefully, more than just fingers crossed, I know it's gonna go well. We can actually maybe include one or two more grade levels next year if that's a success. So we're definitely looking forward to making sure that our, with a program like that, our school becomes that place where our students want to be. It's the type of place where they feel safe and things are, you know, nice, nice to look at. So, next. Once again, equity, joy, and community, I added a few pictures there of what is life at Lauradel. People are happy and just being themselves. Now, when it comes to, sorry.
All right.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead. Next. Why, 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 why back? So I told you to, don't look at math, we're gonna do it later and this is the time to do it. In spite of all our efforts to make things better when it comes to language arts, we still need some work to do when it comes to math. Our numbers did decline from twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four, nine point five points. That said, we're definitely working really hard to make sure that some of those very same learning strategies that we utilize while helping our English learners and pretty much all our students are also used during math time. Because language and math, math is a language. So you need to figure out in order to make sure that you gain all those insights, you're able to access what is being presented in front of you. Next. So, what are some of the opportunities that we have at school in meeting this goal, CIPS one, CIPS goal number one? So, number one, as I said, when it comes to instruction, multilingual learners are at the forefront. And now we know that learning strategies for multilingual learners are just good strategies for every single student. Those systems that we have in terms of the scaffolds that we can provide our students are what they're gonna be needing in order to make sure that those scores go up in math as well. So, we will continue to implement and monitor some of those systems that allow consistent grade level collaboration. We only have two grade, two classrooms per grade level, so it shouldn't be that hard for teachers to be aligned and pretty much teaching the same thing, not the same way, because we all have different styles, so that's what we're striving for. And lastly, our alignment around cost, which is MT, multi-tiered systems of support, so we can have those wraparound systems around our students when it comes to anything they need. If they need social, emotional help, we can help with certain things that our community liaison could, could do for them. Uh, next. Now, this was a little different from last year in terms of student voice. Now, we actually have a student council composed by third, fourth, and fifth graders. It's a, you know, it's something that we, we started this year and they have helped a great deal when it comes to the climate and culture around school. Their ideas with the mural, what happens during recess and things like that, you know, have different, it's something in them in terms of like, oh, I have agency and I can advocate for certain things that go around, around school. So you have a picture there of some of our third graders, members of that student council. And they meet on Fridays, it's pretty cool, I need, I've been to some other, some of their meetings. So in terms of next steps, so what are some of those measurable uh, next steps that will, they're gonna be related to the outcomes to our CIPS goal? We'll continue to have those processes and procedures that are gonna help our students and our teachers get the support in terms of professional development. We continue to enhance the understanding of the unique needs of diverse English learners and there's strategies that will help them improve with instruction. And lastly, I mentioned this a couple of times already, we'll continue with our parent outreach around student attendance and tardiness. It's one of those things that every morning we get on the phone or we ask parents to come in and we just have, the question is, you know, how can we help you? How can we help a student get here? In elementary school, students don't drive themselves to school or they don't quite, you know, they only walk if they're, if they live nearby. So, we have to help in terms of a parent and just asking, well, what are, what are the issues? And let's try to work together to make sure that that's not the case. So that's pretty much all I have. You guys have any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation, yes, and I will ask my dear trustees.
Thank you, Principal Lopez, for your presentation. I think I drove down close to Lauradel and I saw this school and it looks very nice, looks different than when it used to look like.
All right.
I am excited about the gardening program and I hope the other grade levels get to experience that. I remember I was in school, I would love touching worms and stuff, so. I'm very happy to see that and happy to see the student council. I am happy to see that youth advocacy is so, is happening so early on. I love the point that you made. I love the point that you made about having agency and having the power to contribute. My question is, how closely is the English learner progress metric related to the English language arts? I know that ninety-three percent of the school's population is Hispanic, Latino, or a long-time English learner. So I would like to ask, what have you seen? What are the assimilations? What can you tell us about?
So, I mean, when it comes to showing proficiency with your S-PAC in terms of language arts and math, it's very related to the level of proficiency they have able to achieve with LPAK. Now, the higher you are when it comes to levels in LPAK, if you're at level three or a level four, which means that you're almost ready to be re-designated as a English speaker in that sense, right? You're gonna be doing a lot better. You're gonna be at proficiency level for your grade or near proficiency level. So one of the things that we have seen, and that was part of our work on this past Monday, January sixth, when we had a school, you know, professional development, was to look at our long-term English learners. What is it, what is keeping them from making that progress, which should be yearly when it comes to proficiency levels in taking the LPAK? And we noticed that a lot of times, when it comes to their reading and their writing, that's when it starts to get a little muddy. They have made great progress. They could be a level three or a level four when it comes to speaking and/or listening, which is two of the domains that LPAK, you know, it's, it's taken into account. And then we see a drop when it comes to reading and writing. So that is what's keeping them from, from achieving that and having it to be side by side.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate you on your successes and your drop in chronic absenteeism. I'd like to acknowledge your staff and the work that you guys have done.
Absolutely. Thank you. It means a lot. Thank you.
Yes, I'm a little biased because Laurel Dell is right across the street from where I live. So I'm very special. I was going to say this for my board report, but since you are standing here, thank you to your staff and our, our young artists for our art this month provided by Laurel Dell in the theme of Starry Night. But you've had a very big month in community. I really enjoyed the community day in this past fall of your mural. And I'm surprised I didn't see any more pictures of the mural. I know, but last Friday, with the partnership with the Downtown Art Walk and Youth in Arts, your exhibit of I Am Laurel Dell, not your exhibit, the school's exhibit of I Am Laurel Dell in partnership with Youth in Arts, really showed to highlight the creative thought process of those students that you just talked about in the after-school programs and how they created the mural, the design, the democracy around that and the creativity. And so I want to invite the public, if you have not seen it, they had the exhibit kickoff last Friday, but it's open until the end of the month in downtown San Rafael at Youth in Arts, and it's fantastic. And the other part is last Friday, you're with Laurel Dell's partnership with the City of San Rafael and the Sea Level Rise Project with, like, for example, one of our local UCs and, you know, just bringing, you know, the importance of climate change, but in a way that's for our students, like, that's the creativity part. And so I know that the, again, student artists in Sea Level Rise, their exhibits are on display in the City of San Rafael lobby until the twenty-first.
I was there.
Yeah, right. And so I just wanna just uplift this now and not in the board report of like, there are so many different ways to bring the joy and the creativity. And it's really great to see Laurel Dell really shining in these spaces. So my last question really, or two. One is best practices of chronic absenteeism, you know, our superintendent centered that this year we're really focusing on positive attendance campaign and that percentage change with the decline, which is a good thing. Amazing. Is there one nugget that you want to share or uplift that you've done at your school, you or your team that helped with that decline of chronic absenteeism?
I will, I would think and I would say that, as I mentioned before, it's, it's all about the approach you take when you're making that phone call. It's not accusatory. It's more like inquiry. You wanna know what's going on. And it, as a parent myself, you know, if someone were to like call me and and call me out on something like that, rather than ask me what's going on, you know, I might put a fence in front and, and, and not be receptive to any type of, I don't know, just suggestions or, or tips in, in terms of, you know, what I can do to, to make sure. So to me, that's, that's very important. And at the same time, now you mentioned, you know, having a positive outlook to, you know, people being present and, you know, forgive me if it's a very short presentation in terms of how much time I have and all. So I couldn't include all of that. I, we're gonna go with the perfect attendance awards and making sure that students that are always there feel also good about the fact that, you know, it's, it's hard. It's hard to be there every day, right? So that's something that we want to have this as well. And I think that having those two things go hand in hand, which positive way of communicating with parents and also just making sure that we highlight students that are, are, are there. So we're definitely thinking in terms of doing something like that.
Well, thank you. And then the second question is, in the celebration of your new mural, when is your ribbon cutting ceremony?
So you're gonna be invited. I've been you're gonna be invited. I just spoke with Barbara. You'll be the program director there. And it's gonna be one of these Wednesdays coming up. So we'll put it out there.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Trustee, do you have a marsh? Trustee Kerner?
Thank you for the presentation. I know it takes a lot to put these together. Thank you for bringing the art. I didn't know what that was before, but with the big sign up in the top left, somehow I missed that. Thank you. Congratulations on lowering absenteeism. Great. I like the student council too. I guess especially with the younger kids, that's great to get that started early. One quick question on the math. Has anything changed or did you hold anything constant from last year that helps you identify why there's a decrease?
So we definitely noticed that some of the learning strategies or learning practices we were using with language arts, they were not quite as consistent with math. So small group instruction and differentiating students' learning at their level and what it needed was not something that was happening at that point.
So and not just because, so the new thing actually made it a little worse this year. And that's no, like, not, like, that's fine. Like, you gotta figure it out, but there was a change that you can look at.
And consistency, I think that it's, it's, you know, sometimes you gotta take a step back
Yep.
before you move forward. And I think that the more we ask for it, the more we do it, and the more we refine what we're actually teaching during those moments, it's what, it's are going to make sure that our scores go up.
Okay. Well, great work. It's good that you can recognize what's there. Like, that's the biggest part of the problem. I have something to, to, to go after. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, for your presentation. I wanted to highlight a couple of things you said. So I have twins. And so alignment at grade level, I, I cannot agree with you more. And I wish you so much luck in that, because I, in my five years of being in our district, sometimes my kids come home with different things. And then I have to have a whole conversation about what's happening. So I, and I think that alignment also has to do with consistency as you look back, right? And so the other thing I really appreciated what you said is, as I have fifth graders doing math with them, it's reading the, it's reading the problem, writing the problem, describing how you got there. So the fact that you can really highlight that it's not just math, it's also writing and reading. And I think that sometimes parents, I know that as my kids have gotten higher in math, I have to remind myself that math is not just numbers. So thank you for highlighting that and hopefully sharing that with your parents. I also wanted to thank you for the student council. That's super exciting. Kids love ownership of their school and their pride. And so and I guess I also heard, and my last point is, so gardening success and maybe looking for more funding for anyone out there that wants to fund the garden next year, I guess you're open for that. So the success continues. Thank you so much for your hard work and thank you for being with us here this evening. Thank you.
One little part of that beautiful machine that happens to be collines.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
By way of gardening, I visited Laurel Dell, I think last year with sophomore MSO class. Or I helped, like, a fifth grade class design, some sort of like, like sustainable like structure. And they, the work they were doing in that class was so impressive. And like Laurel Dell as a whole, I think it was, it was a lovely school. And I think your gardening initiative is so important, especially like in the younger grades, I think that that was something I enjoyed so much as a student. I think it's amazing that you're, like, opening that up for more kids. I think that if you needed any help, that MSO program would.
All right. Thank you for saying that. Yeah, thank you for saying that. It is so important that students see what they can do on the soil to literally, we have a a mobile kitchen that uses some of those, you know, produce that they are able to cultivate. So to me, that's like the most wonderful thing that they have gone through the process of, you know, harvesting and doing all of that, and they get to the eating part.
They build a sense of like accomplishment, yeah.
Thank you.
I used to go to Sun Valley Elementary and they had a garden that they brought in, like, they developed while I was there. And I remember that was like some kids' favorite part of the whole school. Davidson also has a garden. We're like right across the street from you guys, right?
Yeah.
So I'm sure if you ever needed help, we could always probably, we have a garden class.
I'll remember.
We'll send you their names. Thank you, trustees.
Well, thank you so much. All right. And we are gonna take a quick break for two minutes. So we're gonna, we'll be right back. Just a two-minute break. Really quick.
Are we missing? No. Or did I, did I move too quickly?
I have a question. I have a really
Yeah, use your dabble. You got this, Vice President.
Okay. Uh, thank you, everyone. We're gonna reopen now, starting with item nine. Yeah, so we have announcements now. We're gonna start this evening with the student board members. So Student Trustee Beach, we will start with you to give an update.
Ah, thank you. Uh, we've just got a little short report here that Leadership Class and I put together here at Davidson. Some things that happened between now and the last board meeting. We had like our quarterly stash and dogs with the principal and some of the admin just grill hot dogs for the students. And you can like buy them using the, we've got these little tickets called positives that they hand out for like good behavior. So I guess that would have been more the last quarter, but it just happened last Friday. Our second, like, spirit rally happened right before we went on winter break. That went well. Leadership Class did great. Our basketball team started basketball games. Students, we've had some schedule changes with the students. So there's not a ton, like, there's not a lot of like completely wiping the students' schedule out and replacing it. It might be just moving them from one class to another. Our intervention class kids that might have had like intervention math or English are seeing a lot of growth. I think they took the I-Ready test at the end of last semester. And apparently, I'm told there's been a ton of growth. So we really like to see that. Our second most senior teacher will be leaving soon. Our, one of our eighth grade P.E. teachers. And we are also getting a new history teacher. There's a new drone club that's going to begin this Friday. And our leadership class is going to be doing a food drive. So we're looking forward to that. And that's about it. Not super eventful two weeks, but.
Well, thank you for the update. And then moving on to Trustee Carol, Student Trustee Carol, from Terralinda.
Hi. These past few, yeah, like coming back has been, yeah, we've really gotten right back into everything. But in recent news, our new wellness center will open up in the next few weeks. It's been under construction, like, it's taking over a larger space. So it's just moving a little bit down the hall and you won't have to walk through admin to get there. So it really does open up the space a little bit more for the students. Also, Trustee Kerner, you've been visiting our classrooms. I have never seen you in one of the classes, but I've taken, I think, two of the classes like that you visit. So I've taken the MSO class and the A Push class. Both amazing. I hope you enjoyed. But yeah, we do have a lot of variety in our class at Terralinda. Also, Ms. Inman is back from Madrone. I'm Ms. Inman. We're so glad you're back. And we really appreciate all that you do. And I hope that Madrone enjoyed your presence. Sure they did. Also, yeah, so I will be here for the next meeting and for the election. And then I will be passing the torch to James Zeno. I have really enjoyed my time as trustee. And it's, I think, a really important position as like a student. It's been so interesting. And
Hi.
Thank you, James.
I'm James Zeno. I'm a Terralinda sophomore. I'm a part of the Marinso program. And I'm super excited to be part of the Terralinda student, or the poll board. or the whole board and I'm a student trustee and I'm super interested in learning about the board and being a part of all these future meetings.
Thank you very much, we're excited to have you here and uh student trustee Carol, thank you very much for everything that you've done so far with us. And actually, I haven't uh I think you said A Push was the gas class, that will be this Thursday that I
Oh, it's this Thursday.
This one's coming up, so I still have a few few left to do, so.
The first, great.
Okay, very good. So uh yeah, thank you again.
Just wanna say thank you for your service this past semester. Um you know, even though you are um doing a switch when we're going to very much excitedly welcome you, James, and and do the swearing in process. Um you are still always welcome to um share updates in general in partnership. And we know that we have our joint legislative action like advocacy day and that's open to all student trustees. And so even though um you are in a moment of transition, if you are still wanting to participate, since you did participate this past fall and to join the Sacramento trip, please let us know and then we'll be able to coordinate that. That will be February twenty six, that's open to all of our student trustees to participate as well as administration and not just um me as a um J-LAC member, but also our other school board members, so. Just wanted to extend that invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your services past semester and we will welcome you at um our next meeting with our swearing in.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to uh the board trustee updates, um trustee Ros.
Uh hi, everybody, Happy New Year. Um I was excited to be part of the luncheon celebration of the end of twenty twenty four and the beginning of twenty twenty five. I look forward to being in those SRCS faculty lunches from now on. Um I'm excited for the new year and having time to collaborate and contribute with our district. And I'm honored to celebrate the legacy of Reverend and Dr. Martin Luther King this this board meeting by approving those resolutions. My email signature on my SRCS email account is actually a quote by Dr. King and it reads as follows. "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Inten- intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." Um in terms of board trustee updates, I'm thrilled to be hopefully uh in as the proceedings go on per parliamentary procedure, joining committees, uh the District English Learner Committee and Community Schools Advisory Council with Mr. Gonzalez back there. And I'm thrilled to be part um to continue service. I'm committed to serving our students, families and staff. And hope to be an erudite person, a word that I learned over the weekend. Um I'm also excited on our agenda, um there is gonna be a part where we talk about the American Source uh program that's gonna be taking part in Bahia Vista. I live close to Bahia Vista and American Source program is a soccer initiative that's gonna be taking place during recess. Uh it's really a on-the-ground thing that I would like to highlight. Students are gonna be able to have uh soccer training during recess and during PE, so I'm super excited to see that. I'm also excited to mention our facilities being improved, always Mr. Tim Ryan in the back and uh to happy to see it and uh in terms of board updates, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, trustee Ros, uh trustee Geneva Marsh.
Alright, welcome back, it's a new year, twenty twenty five. Um in the same spirit of celebration, you know, and honoring, I know that a lot of different um campuses celebrated the holidays. But you know, the school, district, holiday function, party situation, all of us were here in celebration. And y'all are very competitive, you really bring the equity and the community and joy because if you ever have a chance to see them in action, the door decoration contest is a hot topic. Um but there's a lot of creativity and I think that that's really key with a team that's cohesive, right? If you can have fun, you can definitely be able to navigate any challenge, so it was really great to be in celebration of that. Um before the holiday break, I had the opportunity with Director Akram and Director Gonzalez to attend at San Pedro Elementary there, um in the spirit of attendance, there um ninety-eight percent plus attendance um winter celebration. And I I know that we are talking about positive attendance, but it's really great to share best practices. And it was really cool to go from classroom to classroom in celebration and talk about, not in a punitive way, but saying celebration and seeing the young people with their certificates either having a hundred percent attendance that semester or just missing one class, right? But then even though there was like maybe five in one class, everybody cheered. And then they were encouraged that, okay, just because you didn't get it this semester doesn't mean that we couldn't work together to get ninety-eight percent plus attendance the following semester. And to see that joy in camaraderie amongst those students was beautiful to witness and so that was awesome. Um more mundane things, just kidding, uh bureaucracy. The Joint Legislative Act Advocacy Committee that we just talked about, we had our meeting last week. So we have our advocacy day in Sacramento that's open to student trustees, board members and administration. An opportunity point to really uplift what's happening with education and policy change here at the local level in Sacramento, that is February twenty six. Um but also something to highlight with our brothers and sisters in solidarity in education and um in LA Unified School District and other Southern California school districts, it's really all hands on deck. So at this J-LAC meeting, we also talked about what are the resources that California School Board Association or what can we do in partnership just to support, also to learn. You know, the North Bay fires weren't that long ago, that was twenty seventeen. And even though that was affecting our neighbors in Sonoma County, we still had to support each other in mutual way. So this is something, an opportunity point to up um to really highlight that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And so thinking of our brothers and sisters in in LA in those school districts. Um in the spirit of Center for Volunteer Nonprofit and Leadership, the Heart of Marin Awards were last week. And what's exciting is that there's a great category about youth volunteer of the year. And it was so beautiful to witness that several of our San Rafael City School youth were not only nominated, but we had one of them as a winner. And as a winner, you receive a five thousand, oh sorry, that was a lot, one thousand dollar scholarship. Um and so I just wanna say thank you to Annie Carmona um for her work at the Youth Leadership Institute, Candace Lucas for her work with the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy. And Adriana Martinez for her work with Marin nine to twenty-five. And congratulations to Candace Lucas for receiving one of the one thousand dollar scholarships. It's really cool to be able to see our San Rafael City School students being able to really um be in community. And I think that's about, oh, one one piece. As um at our last meeting last Monday, um I wanna say thank you to President Martine as well as Supervisor Diaz Geisels for ending our meeting in honor of a longtime community member and friend, Greg Nell. Greg Nell served for a very long time here for our San Rafael City School Board. Also, he served um as a Marin County Office of Education um School Board trustee. And um his wife and partner has been a long-term Terre Linda High School employee and not just employee, community member. Their children graduate from our school district and they've been in community. And so even though we ended last week's meeting in memory of him, his legacy and the efforts that he's done in honor of our school district and our community will be longstanding. And so the reason why I wanted to share it in my board report is because in full disclosure, he'd been a longtime community member and mentor to me in my career at the County of Marin, in my career in public service. And when I decided to um go for trustee Jackson's appointment, he supported me along the way and just said, whatever it is that you need, we support each other in community. And that's the type of guy he was. And so I just wanted to say that it's so important that um we recognize those types of seed planting because I'm a product of his mentorship as well. So thank you, Greg, for your service.
Thank you for that, thanks. Um so for my update, first of all, I wanna say late uh Happy New Year to everyone uh and hope everyone is getting back into the swinging things and uh has a great kick off to the new year. Um I don't have a lot of updates tonight, I had a few family issues that I had to take care of over the last uh couple of weeks. Um but I am back uh now and kind of in full swing and I have um as we talked about, four, actually more school school business finally scheduled on the books uh to uh to stick with and uh continue to learn more about the classrooms of Terre Linda. Uh again, after that, I hope to continue that on to the other schools as well. Uh that's up my update for now and uh I will pass it over to you, Bob.
Uh sure, I'd uh as just deputy superintendent, no major update, just wanna say that I'm honored to to sit here and support the board tonight with Superintendent Geisel's uh feeling ill and hope that she's on the mend and can get through um this sort of respiratory thing that seems to be impacting a lot of people. Everybody I talk to seems um know somebody or or um or have been affected by this themselves. And so happy to be here and support and and to move on and hear from our labor partners.
Thank you. Um okay, yes, so moving on to our uh labor partners, um we will start with uh CSEA.
Great, um I will bring over Tanya and then we also have SRTA online, so I'll bring them over as well. They're ready. But Tanya, when you're able, you should be able to unmute yourself and start your video and begin.
Good evening, um trustees, um I have a short report tonight since we recently back in December, as I mentioned at the last board meeting in December, we had uh not a non-election because people ran unopposed. But with this new e-board, with the shifting of e-board that we have, we have a lot of new energy. Um so there'll be some changes. I my face will not be the face you see every other Monday night now from now on. Um we're gonna be rotating our e-board presenting um presenting at the board meetings as well as some committee changes um that I will notify Bob and Darlene of, of who will be representing the CSEA um on those committees. I would uh within the next couple of days. I really, um I could tell from one of the student trustees a report that I think Ms. Inman's in the room. Um and if she is, um I just wanna thank her, um I have my Madrone hat on right now. Um she was amazing, she brought a breath of fresh air um to our campus. And now with Dr. Myra Perez, oops.
No, you're good, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, I was like, my screen went blank. So now with Dr. Myra Perez in the seat, um she, it's been a smooth transition, just as I knew it would be. Um so thank you for that. Um but with with CSEA on the brain, um I wanna focus my report tonight, um a little bit kind of like trustee Mo did, um on former trustee Greg Nell. Um former trustee Greg Nell was on the board when I started my union leadership work. Um he was a great part of Art Classified. He's not only the husband of an employee, he's a husband of a classified employee. And she has been in our district for so long and Greg, the work he did on the board and the way he supported classified employees was truly, truly amazing. Uh he would not, and it had, he generally cared about us, he generally cared about our well-being and what we were doing at sites. Um it's not, not just because his wife was a classified employee, but he truly did care. If he saw an issue going on that the book, the board and classified can work together on, he would pick up the phone and call us. Hey, sorry to bug you, I know you're at work, but what do you think about this? Or what do you think about that? Or how can we resolve this? Or how can we resolve that? Um I know it was a blow to us um hearing about his passing and especially to his wife. Um but I just wanted to take this moment to recognize and thank Greg Nell for all the work he did, all those years on the school board for us and the way he worked with us um in such a collaborative ma- manner. Um we truly thank him for his service and his time towards classified employees. With that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We have Catherine Blake with the SRTA, Catherine.
Hello. Uh good evening, Board of Trustees and Deputy Superintendent Marcucci. I'm Catherine Blake, multi-tiered systems of support instructional coach at Coleman and SRTA secretary, representing our early intervention through eighth grade educators. This evening, San Rafael Teachers Association members would like to share our excitement for upcoming bargaining for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six collective bargaining agreement. As our bargaining chair Kelly Whalen expressed at the last board meeting, the five members of the SRTA negotiations team represent nearly three hundred educators. While SRTA educators have dif- diverse needs, work experiences and job descriptions, we do share a common goal. For all of the students of the SRCS elementary district to have the best education and experiences possible. And for SRTA members to have working conditions in the collective bargaining agreement that support that goal. As we bargain, please consider that the CBA affects almost every aspect of an educator's daily job. Including how often they attend site meeting, site committee meetings, how much time they have to collaborate with their colleagues, how many hours of staff meetings and trainings they attend, how many students can be enrolled in their class, how many non-instructional or supervisor duties they must perform outside of their regular classroom or specific role duties, how many professional development days they must attend and when, what percentage of increasing benefits cost must be borne by the educator, even our legal safety, even our legal rights to safety while on the job, there are many more. We ask that our professionalism, expertise and dedication are honored throughout the process. And that all that is on and has been added to our educator plates outside of instruction and student support are thoughtfully considered. As Dr. Luis Cruz reminded our TK five educators last Monday, during a professional development, we are professional educators. Ensuring that all students in SRCS receive a high-quality education regardless of what school site they attend or which classroom they are in continues to be our goal alongside working conditions that make this possible and joyful. Lastly, please also keep an eye out in your email inboxes for invitations to our schools from our site representatives. We would love to see each of you at our sites in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think this one we have, yeah, SRFT you have, Morgan. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you, I'm Morgan Agnew, President of the San Rafael Federation of Teachers, representing certificate employees at the high school district. Uh welcome trustee Ros, I look forward to working with you going forward in the future. Uh I wanna thank trustee Kerner again, I cannot ever recall a trustee showing such commitment to getting a firsthand look at our classrooms and our day-to-day, so I really, really appreciate what you're doing.
Pleasure.
Thank you much, I'm sure uh I'm sure it's been enlightening for you as well. Bet your kids appreciate how much time you're spending at this. Thank you, Mr. Marcucci for uh for stepping in tonight and Mr. Marcucci, Ms. Avalos, look forward to negotiations this uh Thursday. I'm gonna also take a moment to remember uh trustee Greg Nell and his uh long uh service to the district, we very much appreciate it and will miss him. And as this is the last uh uh meeting prior to the incoming, the changeover to presidential administration, I wanna take one more time to uh reemphasize SRFT's unwavering support for our um underserved students, uh our our students uh who are of mixed families or undocumented. Um we uh pledge our support to them going forward, as I know everyone else in this room does as well. Um the main uh bulk of my report tonight is to share a statement that SRFT has been working on for several months now uh in regards to standards-based learning, which some of you are probably more familiar with than up than others. And after I share this statement with you, I'll be emailing it to the entire board um and also to site administration, it's already been shared with Superintendent Geisels um and uh Ceci Perez and um oh, sorry, excuse me, and all SRFT members. Um so background, since the start of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, the San Rafael High School District has focused our professional development on the topic of standards-based learning, also called SBL, modeled after the Marzano method. Spearheaded by former superintendent Jim Hogabum and former director of secondary education Tyler Graff, the initiative to explore SBL has included the formation of a teacher leadership team, or TLT, which is focused largely but not exclusively on SBL, numerous staff meets, numerous staff members attendance at conferences, including many out of state, the creation of academic coaches whose jobs included work on the transition to SBL, the use of the vast majority of early release days and full-day professional development, as well as many staff and department meetings to focus on SBL topics and a full-day off-site presentation by Marzano employee Tammy Heflebauer, an author who's written extensively on SBL. In summary, SRST- SRCS has invested significant resources in exploring the Marzano method of SBL. Throughout that process, SRFT members have engaged in good faith and with professionalism, albeit sometimes with a healthy skepticism born of decades of experience with other initiatives. Many of our members have enthusiastically embraced Many of our members have enthusiastically embraced SBL, others have been more cautious. The district is currently in a time of transition. The majority of our board, senior-level district administrators and many site administrators were not in their current jobs when the shift to SBL began and the most recent iteration of our long-term plan, Together 2024, is now out of date. As the new district leadership team writes the next long-term plan, the Santerfield Federation of Teachers would like to take this opportunity to share our position on SBL. This statement is based on a survey of our members and extensive conversations among the SRFT Leadership Committee, a group of over 20 members representing a broad cross-section of our membership. In crafting this statement, we have considered both our understanding of SBL as a general principle as well as our experience with the implementation in our district specifically. This statement reflects the view of the Leadership Committee, which we understand to be the consensus view of the supermajority of our membership. So with that background, here's our statement. SRFT values the work that has been done on SBL over the last three years, which has allowed us to improve alignment, prioritize essential content, explore less punitive grading practices and consider ways to allow students multiple opportunities to show proficiency and mastery. In particular, SRFT values the work of our members who have led this initiative, including TLT members and instructional coaches. SRFT opposes changing reported grades to align with standards-based grading practices. Report cards should continue to reflect letter grades and percentages that have been common practice for decades, not the Marzano four-point grading scale that could create unnecessary confusion for students, parents, teachers and colleges. SRFT opposes any efforts by the district or site administration to mandate the use of SBL practices by our members, particularly through the evaluation process, which is part of the collective bargaining agreement and cannot be altered unilaterally. It should be up to our members to determine how best to integrate the principles of SBL into our classrooms and workspaces. SRFT will vigorously defend any temporary or probationary employees who are non-re-elected due to their rejection of SBL. Teachers' opinions on SBL are not predictive of their teaching ability and should not be the basis of employment decisions. SRFT requests that all further work on SBL-related topics be voluntary and course-specific. Only employees who have expressed a specific interest in continuing to develop priority scales, priority standards, excuse me, proficiency scales and standardized assessments should be involved in that work and their work should be specific to the classes they are teaching, not generalized to the department, site or district. SRFT requests that the district continue to provide logistical support for those members who do wish to continue the work on SBL, including through funding pullout days, facilitating collaboration across sites and organizing distributing priority standards, proficiency scales and other materials. The district's support has been invaluable and should continue. In addition, the district should ensure that we have not abandoned other prior initiatives, such as the graduate profile, in which we also invested significant resources in the past. And last, SRFT requests that future professional development focus on other priorities. In particular, we should not be funding out-of-state conferences or flying in outside experts to learn about SBL. While some of our members wish to continue to work to implement SBL in their classrooms, few, if any, of our members need additional professional development to understand SBL. Furthermore, by continuing to work on SBL, we are missing the opportunity to explore other important topics, such as addressing the student mental health crisis, teaching media literacy in the age of generative AI and other topics identified by teachers, counselors, librarians, administrators and other school staff as specific areas of need. SRFT values our collaborative relationship with the district. We thank the district for the work already done on SBL and we look forward to shifting to new practices. So thank you very much. I know that was a long statement today, but you've got this in writing as well. After two and a half years of working on this, we thought it was time to stake out a clear position that we could all refer back to in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is in for our announcements. Yeah, moving on to public public comment on non-aggrandized items.
So those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature and those in the room could submit their blue cards to the the table. So we'll give it a moment. Again, those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature. Same then.
So moving on to 11, approval of consent agenda. Oh, this is where we do for 11.
I'd like to pull an item from the consent agenda. For spotlight, I'd like to pull item number 11 from the consent agenda, please.
Anything else? After items pulled, do we can we start talking about it?
Now we can talk about that. Okay. Move to the balance of the agenda after you've done that.
Okay, very good. Sorry for the, I'm asking for instruction. This is first time I'm presiding as the president, so as well, vice president as president, so stand it.
You have a couple of rookie presiders here.
We're all learning and growing together.
Please be patient with us. Okay, yeah, Darlene, yes, Ms. Avalos will be speaking to item number 11. Thank you.
Vice President Kerner. So we have pulled the Certified Classified Personnel Summary specifically for the elementary school district. We would like to recognize a title change of Mr. Osagera, the current interim principal to principal of Venetia Valley. And that will take effect February 1st. Superintendent Guy Sales and myself and some cabinet members did go on Friday to Venetia Valley to notify the staff so they are aware of the changes and they were very happy and ecstatic about the change. So congratulations, Mr. Osagera, on becoming the principal of Venetia Valley.
Can you please, I gotta I gotta get my little guy to bed, but thank you, board. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Marcucci. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Alex, Nancy, thank you guys for being here. Venetia Valley is an amazing place. I didn't think I'd fall in love with it so fast. And I and I did. So I'm really lucky to be there at least another year, hopefully more. And hopefully I continue to have your support as I move forward. So thank you for having me up in Venetia Valley.
Yeah, thank you and congratulations. We're very happy to have you here.
Thank you.
And also to welcome your family as well here. And the president, sorry, that was such a long procedure, but I just want to say this quick note. I got to meet you last year. You were my graduation buddy at Santerfield High. I was a newly appointed trustee navigating all the ceremonies of ceremonies, but you were not only warm and welcoming. In between, when appropriate, you provided context and the beauty of the the relationships you had with not only your colleagues, but the students. And so Venetia Valley is really lucky to have you, but we're still very lucky to have you still with your continued leadership in our school district.
Thank you.
Some words from me, Mr. Osagera. You were my coach during Proshsov. I don't know if you remember me, but I remember you. That's a good thing. And I remember as I knew her, Ms. Garcia is my eighth grade government teacher. I'm happy to see you guys now with a small child. I wish you the best on all your endeavors and we're grateful to have you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all.
You get approval for item 11.
Do I do approval of 11, please?
I would.
Okay, so we're going to take item 11 and we'll we'll do a vote at this time. So I need a motion to.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, no, no, item number 11.
Motion to approve item 11.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Rotos and as first and second, a motion by trustee Davida Marsh.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Kerner.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and no opposed, none whatsoever opposed or abstained. So motion is approved. Okay, and now we move on to the rest of the consent items. We'll do this as all in a group. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Thank you. Trustees, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent items are approved. Moving on to 13. Okay, staff reports, education services and. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
All righty, we are in our last board report that's slated so far this year on multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. And tonight we will be focusing specifically on academics and I will have coordinator Michelle Harland joining me for part of this for secondary as well. Am I on? Yep, give a try. So multi-tiered systems of support is all over the LCAP. You'll see it from one, two and four. And we have been talking about multi-tiered systems of support in a few different ways. So back in October, we talked a little bit just about the framework and what it is. So I'll do just like a minute on that tonight, just to bring our brains all back to that. And then we talked about community schools and how that connected to multi-tiered systems of support, really thinking about our families and the ways in which we can support our families in schools. Whoops, sorry, it's coming back. And then, excuse me, and then we also talked about Susan Akram did a presentation on student support, specifically focusing more on student wellness, behavior, social, emotional at the end of October. And then tonight, we're going to be talking about academics in. So just a reminder, multi-tiered systems of support, this this body of work has existed for a long time. This is something that the state has also been really focusing on and it's something the state has been leaning into for a lot of things. And it's really a framework for which we think about schools and we think about supports that we might provide families and students in order to be more successful in our schools. And again, this is a statewide initiative and they they think about it through a number of lenses. And so we have tried to bring those lenses into the work we've done here. But in particular, if you look at that top, the academic, the behavior and social, emotional, those have been some of the ones that we focused on, really thinking about the whole child comes to school with us every day. And so how do we support the whole child as best we can, knowing that each child needs something different in order sometimes to be successful in our in our system. And then just real briefly, what do these tiers mean? Tier one is what kind of all students are getting, right? So when they enter our schools, they all have access to these things, whether it is around social, emotional learning, whether it is around even attendance, whether it's also around the instruction that they're getting for grade level content. Tier two is additional supports we're giving to students to help support them to learn. It's been identified that they're not learning yet in the amount that we'd like them to be or they're not quite yet where we'd like them to be. And so what might be some additional supports we can we can plug in to support them? And then tier three is when we when we're really looking more at there, there might be a kind of a larger body of skills that they're missing. And again, this could be behavioral, this could be academic. And at that point, it's really thinking about what are the most important skills? We want to get this student as a starting place and then we can add on from there, but it's it's much more intense supports. Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about what tier one, two and three might look like in our elementary schools. For academics specifically, I'm going to start with reading and then we'll look at math. There's obviously much more to academics and just reading and math, but those are the two we focus on the most. So that's where I'm going to spend my night. Tier one, reading, when we think about what's the instruction that all of our students are getting that really research has shown will work for most of our students. It's thinking about, again, this is our elementary students, but phonics and word work. So we have some curriculum we work on, just what are the basic skills that students need to have in order to become readers? And it is everything from my my little one at home, my kindergartner is going around, mommy, bat, what does it sound like? Buh, at, bat. And that sounds silly, but that's like, that is one of the places we start, right? It's just the sounds. It's rhyming games in kindergarten. It's identifying what's the first sound you hear in your name. All of those things build up to then connecting letters to sounds and then putting those sounds together, both in just listening to them and also then beginning to read them. And so all in there, you could imagine there's all sorts of little learning pieces that we want to make sure we give students from everything to vowel teams, what what two letters come together or three letters come together to make different sounds. That's in the are more of the, you know, second, late first into second. And if they don't have those foundational skills, that's when we start to see even become really challenging for students. And then we're also at the same time wanting to build reading comprehension. Again, reading comprehension in our TKK even first might not be them reading the book, but it will be them talking about the story, right? What happened? Who were the characters? What was funny about that character? Why did you like that character? Working our way to summary and then by fifth grade, we're talking about character inferences. We're talking about the way dialogue may have changed the story, what we learned, things like that. And then there's also a category we we think about, which is word work and that's more related to writing, but we see it in in reading itself. So the way verb tenses change, what a complete sentence is, why I pause at a period as opposed to pausing at the end of a line of text, right? All of those things impact reading. And so that's the tier one reading focus and we have strategies, we have curricula we use for that. And then within that, the supports that are given are really whole-class instruction and small group instruction. So if a student is on grade level or not, we're still working with them in a in a small group, right? There's still work we can do that's at their level to push them to the next step. So that's that is the work and the instruction that all of our students are getting when it comes to tier one, right? That's that's across the board. Tier two is when we're seeing students not yet at the same level as their grade level peers when it comes to something that we've generally already taught. So I'll use vowel teams or like the long E, right? You can have what we call a mama, a mama E at the end. And so that makes a long vowel, right? When there's a silent E at the end, but there's also EA that also makes a long vowel or EE. And if a student is struggling with that long vowel concept, we're going to work in a small group to support them with that. That can be both those foundational skills and it might be some supports for students who are struggling with reading comprehension. Often, reading comprehension is really tied to vocabulary, which is tied to language. And so we see that a lot in our elementary schools. The way that we would give these supports are small group in class. Again, students are in small reading groups. In the upper grades, that often looks like a book club and so it's more independent, the teacher pushing in in different places, as well as small groups for students who are below grade level and then acceleration for students who are above. We have a lot of really great one-on-one volunteers who will read with kids one-on-one throughout the week. We have a lot of support with that. We also have our individualized learning through MyPath, which is related to iReady to also support students getting some instruction on online exactly where they're at. So they take the iReady test and then if they need a lesson, we'll go back to long vowels. If they need some lessons on long vowels, then MyPath will give them lessons to work through and the teacher can come in and check to see if they're learning those lessons and completing them. And that is also true for students who are above grade level. They'll get lessons tailored to their level. So those would be some of the tier two supports we see in place in class. Tier three supports is really where you see more of the intervention teacher work happening. And so we have intervention teachers across our schools. They both push into the classroom, but primarily pull out. And they're really working with students, generally speaking, who are further below grade level who are really needing to fill more of those gaps. So this could be a third grader, for example, who really still doesn't have those long vowels and is still really struggling. And they are also weaving in some reading comprehension work alongside that. So those are generally speaking, the tiers of supports we give. Our intervention teachers sometimes also work with the students who are right below grade level. We're seeing that if we give them a nice six-week bump, sometimes what we see is they're now with their peers and they're able to to be more with the class on grade level. But those are the general supports we would give at tier one, two and three in reading. In math, it's very similar. We we talk about reading foundational skills a lot. There's math foundational skills too, right? If you don't understand the way in which numbers work in kindergarten and first grade, you're really going to have a hard time with fractions and decimals later. So there are, there is a group of math foundational skills that we're really working to address in different ways. Tier one math instruction is that grade level instruction. We are piloting right now a new curricula for math and so that'll shift for next year. And actually, as Mr. Lopez was saying, there is also a real focus on whole class, but also what's the small group math work that we can do? Again, both for acceleration and for students who need some intervention, but that's all happening in the classroom. Tier two is similar. It's again, really thinking about the targeted skills. What we often see students struggling with probably the most is number sense. So if I. So if I pick up a group of, like little plastic teddy bears, I pick up a little group of plastic teddy bears and I put them on the desk, I want kids to be able to approximate what a handful it is. If they're saying it's 50, they're really struggling with numbers, right? I have some work to do. If they're saying it's one, I also have some work to do, and so how do we understand, do they have those basic foundational skills? This is where that small group might come in. A lot of math happens through, that small group instruction happens through games, and through problems that can be simplified, and then that can be grown, right? So we're reaching kind of, depending on where the child is, we're either accelerating, or we're providing some enrichment to them. MyPath, again, is another option for math, and so teachers are using that. Tier three, one of the things that we very, almost exclusively, this work is really around number sense in tier three, this is where we see students sometimes who are third, fourth grade, who are really, really struggling with concepts of numbers, the ideas of which numbers are bigger and smaller, place value, but kind of those really foundational math skills that we need to be successful later on in math. This is an emerging practice, we have one school who has a dedicated math intervention teacher, and then other schools where they have a group or two of math intervention, where we're really trying to target those real universal skills, but again, primarily around number sense. And so I want to walk you through a little bit, the same way Ms. Akram did, for social, emotional support, what that cycle of support might look like for a student. And so the first one is, a teacher will identify that a student is where they are and what supports they're going to put in place. Again, a lot of those first levels of support are happening in the classroom, teachers are excellent at this, and so they'll start, excuse me, if they identify a group of students who's really struggling with long vowels and initial blends, putting letters together at the beginning, they're going to pull that small group, and they're going to be focusing on that in their small group. And they'll do that for six to eight weeks, and they'll track data, and they'll meet with their grade level team, their professional learning team, and talk about what's working and where they're struggling. One of the growing practices we're seeing is, sometimes for small group instruction, teachers regrouping across a grade level, so that they're able to better target the needs of students during that time. After you do that intervention, if you're seeing, in the classroom, if you're seeing a student still really struggling, that is when a referral to the cost team might happen, to say, you know, "We've tried this group of interventions, and we're really not seeing the expected result." And so at that cost team meeting, they may work, they may decide, "We're going to keep doing this, but we're going to have the coach push in and do some more work," right? Or as a PLT, "We're going to make some adjustments, try something different that worked in another classroom, and see if that's successful with the student." If this is something that they've tried for a while with the student, they may also refer them to intervention. And so the intervention teacher then is going to work to pull that student out, very specifically at a time when grade level instruction is not happening. If students are missing that tier one instruction, they're never going to catch up with their peers, and so there's been a lot of work around making sure that's happening at a different time. And then the intervention teacher is going to work to create a SMART goal, where they can track progress on Ion, which is one of our systems, to be checking in every couple weeks. If my two goals for this student are blending initial sounds and long vowels, I'm going to be doing little mini checks along the way to see if it's working. And then after that six-to-eight week cycle, again, coming back to the cost team and determining, do we do another cycle, or do they now, excuse me, only have that tier two instruction in the classroom, they've made progress? If there have been multiple cycles of intervention, that would be when a conversation would happen about whether or not a referral to special education is appropriate. That would only happen after we've had SSTs, meetings with families, and really talked about what we're seeing as working and what we're not seeing as working. But it's not until we've gone through all of those processes that we would have a discussion as to whether a referral to special education is appropriate. Okay, so we have been at this work for a few years in elementaries, and every year, not even every year, every month, we're finding things that we're saying, "Okay, this is definitely a best practice," and it's spreading amongst our sites. And we're figuring out like, "Ooh, that actually didn't work, we need to pull back on that, we need to try something else," right? And the great thing is, we have these teams, both our intervention and our coaching team, as well as a really cohesive principal team, that are sharing what's working. And so these are the, when I think about the kind of the best practices that have emerged over the past few years, these are the ones that I would name as things that we continue to go deeper in and refine our practice, and we're seeing student outcomes from them. So one is, if students are not getting strong first instruction and grade level instruction, that's like the biggest miss we could have, right? And so a lot of focus on what is happening for that first instruction, that alignment that Mr. Lopez and some other principals have talked about, and really focusing on best instructional practices, both through professional developments, through coaching, and so forth. Another thing that has happened, and I, one of the things that's often called is win time, so what I need is time, and it's a dedicated approximately 30 minutes across a grade level where no new instruction is happening. So there's no new grade level instruction happening, but it's time where small groups are being pulled, and that might be a time where intervention classes are also being pulled, so that students aren't missing the first instruction, and if they're ready to be accelerated, they're above grade level, they're also getting that during that time. It sounds, I do not envy what it would look like at the high school to do a master schedule, and I'm sure at elementary, it seems really simple. It's really complex for our administrators to think through between all of the specialties, we have math, we have art, we have all of our different recesses, it becomes a very colorful masterpiece. But principals and teacher leaders have spent a lot of time working to design our elementary schedules to best support instruction, and this has been, this has been a really big focus across our elementary schools. Another one that you'll hear us talk about often is professional learning teams, and this is a really, really powerful opportunity for teachers to align with one another, but also to really talk about, what did you do that worked, right? How do I learn from you and your best practices? How do I share these best practices? And how do we share students sometimes across one another? If your strength is really teaching number sense, my students who are having the hardest time with number sense, I want them to go to you for 30 minutes. And if I crush it at fractions, have them come to me for fractions, right? How do we leverage one another's strengths across the day and across students, but also how do we share best practices and look at our data together? Another thing has really been mapping out school-wide cycles of intervention. And so the, most schools, before the school year starts, map out their six-to-eight week cycles, they have anywhere between four to six cycles over the course of the year, it coincides with data collection time, it coincides with PLTs, and they're really looking at data to make choices about who are we going to serve, why, and what are their needs. Another big focus we've had is the identification of essential and guaranteed standards. There was some research done, that if you tried to teach every single standard, I'm not even going to include TK here, because this was before TK was a thing, but K-12, you would actually need a K-22 system. That's how many standards there are. And so how do we focus our attention on the most important ones, right? The ones we know are essential for the grade level after them, and the skills we need our kids to come out with. And so we've done a lot of that work in elementary, and that is the focus of those PLT conversations, but also the focus of instruction. And then we'll see this, you'll see this reflected in the revised report cards that we have coming out in 25.6. Very briefly, the assessment system, we have been using in elementary, has been supportive of this work, iReady in particular, both the diagnostic assessments, where we're kind of getting a nice dipstick as to where students are, but within there, there's also smaller assessments. And then we're doing a lot of work on common format, what's called common formative assessments, and it's where we, as a second-grade team, for example, are going to come together, maybe it's just like, three questions we're asking students, but we're going to come back with that data, and we're going to see, how did they do on it? How, it's going to tell us, not at the end of a unit, but every week, where are students in this work? And then teachers do a ton of this formative assessment, but that's really, really important. The other thing that will fold in next year, and we'll talk more about later on, and I'll put more in a board update soon, but is that there is now a requirement for dyslexia screener in California, and that will start next year. So I will bring more information, the screeners were just approved in late December, but we'll fold that into, how does that dyslexia screener then inform our work even more deeply when it comes to needs students might have? Our cost team meetings have been really instrumental, we've been sharing a lot of best practices and really tightening that work. And the other thing we've really worked on this year is making sure the special education team is in attendance for those, for a couple reasons. One, special educators have great strategies that can work for many of our students. We want to hear those before a child is even referred to special education, right? Let's learn from one another. But the other is, if there's a student we are continually bringing up, right, that we've been bringing them up over and over, over the same year, we want the special education team hearing that conversation long before we get to a conversation about assessment, right? We all want to be on the same page when it comes to what might a student need, and how do we collaborate and share best practices? And then the last one has been, the past two years, we've had intervention team meetings across the district, where we pull all of our intervention teachers together, and we really are working on alignment within that team and sharing best practices, and that has also been really powerful. This year, we're focusing on Ion goal setting and data tracking, that's been new for intervention teachers, and a little bit crunchy sometimes, but we're making some really, having some good learnings and some good progress there. And then we've been talking a lot about, if you can imagine, an intervention teacher may see students from 23 classes, and so how do we make sure that teachers are all staying in communication, and then we're also making sure we're communicating appropriately with families, and so that can, sharing those best practices has been another thing we continue to build on. So in terms of thinking about next steps, this is, like I opened with, this is work that we continue to refine regularly. Sites continue to try things, learn things, share with one another, we continue to reflect as a district, what did we see work, what did we see flop, and where do we need to kind of double down and focus our efforts? In terms of solid tier one and tier two, there are some big shifts coming, and so I just, it's important, I think, for us to name, having a new math curriculum next year, we're very excited about, we're about to start the second curricula pilot at most of our schools starting next week, but that will be a shift in instruction, and we should expect that to take some time to get used to. And then the goal is to have a new ELA adoption for 26, 27, so to pilot that next year. And so in addition to the practices we know that we continue to need to implement, there's also still the curriculum that we continue to update. We can only deepen our work when it comes to assessments and data. On January 6th, almost every school dove very deeply into their iReady data, and used that to inform their next set of instruction coming up, their next intervention groups, their next small groups in the classroom. So we continue to need to just deepen that work. Still, again, how do we continue to align in data tracking and data monitoring? So if one site is monitoring a different way than another site, how do we pull district data and make sure it's meaningful? So we're getting much more aligned in that. I would say a couple things, this is really people-heavy work, right? All of this work is work that requires time for people to work together, it requires trust for people to work together, to share. When I have a student, I've been really, really trying, and I, it's not working, right? To be able to say to a colleague, "I need help, tell me what you're doing." And there's a lot of work that coaches and intervention teachers are doing, people who are not necessarily in the classroom to really support this work continuing to happen, so it's really people-heavy work. And then we're also really trying to increase our collaboration between special education and general education. This, I would say, is probably a goal that every district shares, and it continues to be work that we focus on here, especially as we continue to work on more inclusive practices, and really, if we're going to address, continue to focus on how do we improve achievement for students with disabilities, we have to continue to focus on this collaboration. And then again, coming back to what's working, what are we struggling with, and keeping that work going. I'm going to pause there, so those are, that's an overview of the work we've been doing in elementary for the past couple years, but I'm going to maybe pause there for elementary questions before we move to secondary. Would you guys like to dive straight into secondary?
Thank you.
Jesse Rose, have any?
Sure, I have some questions. So I'm looking at the cycle of intervention right now, and one question that I have is, what is the composition of the cost team? And can you explain the role of the intervention teacher, and what is the distinction, if any, between case managers in the cycle of support and intervention teachers?
Give me one moment, I just want to write these down, so I don't forget them, okay? So those are great questions. The cost team, Coordination of Services team, is what that stands for, and that team is composed, composition is slightly different on each site, but by and large, it'll have an administrator, it will have a school counselor, it will have your coach, it will have your community liaison, and then it'll have your school psychologist. That's the general composition, they're more, depending on who else is at the school site, there may be more, but that's the general composition. And that composition is very perfect, right? It's, again, if we come back to this, the whole child is with us, we're making sure we pull people who serve children in different ways. The intervention teacher is a teacher who will, by and large, pull students out to focus on very specific skills. So when we think about, when we think about these tier three skills, this, the intervention teacher is pulling students out to focus on a very specific set of skills, generally they're pulled out for about 30 minutes, and it's over a course of six, every day for about six weeks. So the difference between the intervention teacher and the case manager, students often come to us with multiple needs, and so someone on that cost team is assigned as the case manager, and that person is helping think about, you know, let's say Stephanie is struggling with attendance, I also have some behavior issues, often, we see that paired with students who are struggling academically, or who are struggling with attendance, and I'm really, really struggling on reading, so I have a, I'm also going to an intervention group. So that case manager is tracking on me to make sure that I'm continuing to coordinate all of those services. So if I have a school attendance review team, right, I signed a contract with my family about attendance, I have someone tracking on that, I have someone also working with me, because I need a behavior chart in class, because I'm having a hard time, and also checking in with the intervention teacher to see, how's it going? And then sharing between those people, hey, we just learned this about, you know, we learned that Stephanie actually, like, she does great in the mornings, so let's think about, can we move her intervention services to the morning instead of right after lunch? Because that seems to be when she's the most focused, right? So that's your, that's your case manager, is really helping to think about all of the ways in which we might serve a student.
Yeah, and then?
All your questions?
Yeah, that was it, and I would like to highlight the, I guess, multidisciplinary sense that you just acknowledged a student is, and the work that's being done collaboratively to support the student, I think that's very important.
Those cost team meetings are really amazing in the way that they focus on individual students, it's really special to see, so thanks for highlighting that.
Just a quick question, well, one, first of all, think if I take, honoring our request as a board, I know that some of our board members who requested these very like, digger deep, digger deep, that's not even a phrase, like, deeper dive around MTSS, and like, the framing as to, you know, how deep you did, like, I just want to say thank you to all the team members, because it's really helped in terms of making that connection point about the whole child, and the whole system, and the universe, in that same space of clarity, I'm just going to ask a question, can you remind me what the acronym PLT means again?
Professional Learning Team.
Thank you.
You will, please don't ever hesitate to ask us about terms, there's a lot of them, and I try not to always use acronyms, but if I do, just ask, please.
But in that same spirit of like, that connection point, it's just really helpful, especially as we're about to bring in a new member of our governance team, who have yet to be decided, it's just been really helpful with this type of micro breakdown, so thank you for, not only your work, but everybody else, and the previous presentations, that it's all interconnected.
Thank you, it's good so far, I'm going to let you move on to the high school.
Students on them, thank you.
Hello, good evening. So for middle school academic supports, tier one, we'll focus on the priority standards, so you've heard Stephanie talk about the essential standards for elementary, so it's very similar, priority standards for middle school. We're also focusing on PD with integrated ELD strategies. So some of our PD days and our Wednesday after-school meeting time will be focused on integrated ELD strategies that the ELD team, as well as the high school ELD coaches are helping facilitate. And then at both sites, we have an instructional coach supporting our teachers, and at Davidson, we have common planning time, that teachers collaborate and work together. And then for our tier two supports, at David's And then for our tier two supports, at David Science, Davidson, there's two full-time credentialed intervention teachers. So there are six sections of ELA intervention and five sections of math intervention. And then at Venetia Valley, there's a point five intervention teacher that pulls students and works with them around six to eight week cycles. And then for the tier three, we're focusing on the course sequence for newcomers and ELD one through five students. And we also have a resource specialist and speech therapy for students with IEDs. And then for high school, there's some similarities here with the priority standards, so sixth through twelfth grade are all working on priority standards. The instructional coaches are also thank you working on integrated ELD strategies during staff meeting time as well as PD time this year. They have an instructional coach and we also have the college and career advisors at both high schools and academic counselors at all three schools. And then for tier two, we have tutorial and advisory twice a week at both high schools at TL and SR. And for tier three, same thing with the ELD course sequence is mapped out. We also have fuel recovery, fuel credit recovery, which really eleventh and twelfth graders focus on. We have options for students to take fuel online credit recovery for courses. And then again, they also have the resource specialist and speech therapy for students with IEDs. So similar to middle school and that. And then slide. So some of the next steps we're looking at and the constraints we have is limited training in basic literacy and foundational math for secondary teachers. There, we do have many teachers with some training, but there is limited training on those areas. There's complex scheduling for intervention. So it is more difficult in secondary to work intervention into the master schedule unless it's part of one of the courses that we have teachers for. And middle school, we're working on developing an intervention model. So that's something we're really looking at for the rest of this year and next year is figuring out what the model is, what curriculum we're you're we're using and what data and assessment we have for students and for the teachers in training. And then in the high schools right now, there's not true intervention, but it's more of the focused on the remediation and partially that's with the fuel courses. And then we also have the tutorial and advisory classes as well. Are there any questions on middle school?
I have a question regarding the professional learning teams. Are they focused on something specific? When you mentioned, I guess that's just my question, can you go a little bit deeper into professional learning teams? It was interesting.
Professional learning teams, are are you talking about the common planning time, what were we referring to?
Planning team, yeah. And how they differentiate from like teacher time to plan and stuff like that?
So at Davidson, they have a common planning time. So for example, all of the English teachers have one period where they have the same period off, off, but as a planning period, so they have their prep period and then they have a common planning time period. And so they collaborate together on lessons, they look at student work. There's a variety of things they do during that time. They focus on priority standards work. So it always changes during that time, but they have that designated time every day that they get to work together.
Thank you.
No questions, but again, a reiteration of thanks for for the breakdowns.
I have a question on the, for the high school intervention. You you mentioned that there isn't intervention, there's tutorial. And has it always been that way or did there used to be intervention? Students that
Good question. Ms. Edman is here to help us. Has there ever been interventions?
There have been intervention courses, I think, over time in terms of looking at data. The data showed us that essentially having a student take two block periods of math and forego an elective was was not proving to be a successful intervention. And then it was also taking a student who probably had historically their entire education probably not felt great as as a student to then have a reduction of electives, it it was not what was best for students. And so kind of thinking more strategically about how can we provide interventions without impacting their schedule and forcing them to take the subject area that they got to well in twice a day for lengthy periods of time was the shift several years ago, like ten years ago.
And then for tutorial was, has there ever been an additional teacher that's been in for some of the subjects or is it always just?
Teacher pushing in?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if if that's all, if it's always just been that there's enough support from the, you know, the single teacher and the amount of students coming in?
The students kind of, they rotate classes they're in, so that's not always one teacher they're with.
Oh, I see.
For tutorial.
And a teacher can select a group of students to enter their tutorial for some more targeted approached in terms of like remediation or looking at something that maybe they didn't do as well on on a test. So you see that happening as well.
Okay, thank you. I forgot, I'm, I heard you what it's going on next year. Okay, so moving on to item fourteen now, discussion and information. So we have education services and who is with us for this? Oh, thank you.
We're back.
Welcome again.
First is before, I'm Michelle Harland, I'm the coordinator of secondary curriculum instruction.
And I'm Lauren Edman, I am one of the assistant principals at Tarland High School.
So today we're presenting on secondary curriculum advisory council. We're gonna give a brief overview of what it is, the process for it, and then the items that the curriculum council have approved. And then next month, we'll bring them back for consent.
Yeah, so we wanted to take a very brief opportunity just to kind of refresh or educate you all on what a secondary curriculum advisory council does. And so essentially, the first step of work starts at the site in terms of teachers looking at courses, textbooks, novels, vetting different things involving student voice. About three years ago, we did a big push to diversify our novels in our English department. And so that involved students, students reading samples, student voice, student input. From there, it goes to curriculum council. And so that is really where Michelle and I come in. I am facilitating that council, which is comprised of administrators, teachers, counselors and parents. So you have representatives from each site. And we meet monthly to review discussion items or proposed new novels, textbooks or courses to be approved for the following year. And you will also see in there sometimes revisions to existing courses or career technical education pathways, which is also known as CTE pathways. And similar to you all, we follow Robert's rule. And a two thirds of vote is needed for approval for then third and final step of it being presented to you all on curriculum at the board.
So we are gonna bring a few items today that were approved at curriculum council. And these will be implemented next school year, so it won't be for next this semester. When they're approved and they're approved by the board, they will be available at both sites. So right now, it's a six through twelve curriculum council with the items that we have are just for high school. So anything on here that will be approved will be an option for both sites, SR or TL to bring. Doesn't mean they will next year, just because it's approved, it still has to fit in with their master schedule. And there has to be the right teachers and the right credentials to teach the classes. But these are the items that we're bringing, so AP macroeconomics. So this will be a twelfth grade semester course. So right now we have an econ course, this would be an option to take instead. PE soccer, so this would be a full year course. So right now you have PE one, which all ninth grade students take. And then there's usually options for the second year, there's yoga, there's hiking. Based on the school, there's different options. So this will be a year-long soccer course where all the PE standards will still be taught, but through the lens of soccer. The next one is intro to game design, so this will be a CTE course. There was an intro to game design previously, but we've reworked it. And one of the teachers at SR brought this forward and would like to teach this class next school year. And so this will be really focused on building games. And it will end up being a CTE pathway, which is our next item on here, which is game design academy. So there'll be a pathway, CT pathways, two courses minimum, so it's a concentrator course, which would be the intro to game design. And then a capstone course. The capstone course will be brought next school year, but it will be an AP computer science course. That will be worked on next school year and brought to curriculum council next school year. And then the last item we have is a novel Born a Crime by Trevor Noah. And I have a copy if anyone would like to take it to review. Any questions for us about any of these items? Also, in the board report, I did put the curriculum council notes and full summary of each of these items if you wanted to review them more.
No questions, I'm excited to see the AP macroeconomics. I'm taking microeconomics right now in college. I'm also excited to see the PE soccer. Excited to, I know that they're sailing at Centerfell High School. So I'm excited to see this other form of physical qualification. I would love to have the copy of Born a Crime to read, but no questions.
Sorry, I also wanted to just say thank you, Ms. Edman, for your your support of Madron in the transition. So thank you for uplifting that, trustee Carol, in this moment. But anyways, besides from that, it's about recognition. My follow-up question is, thank you for explaining, especially since we have newer team members in our governance team, like, you know, the the breakdown of how it's, two questions. One is, how many members serve on the SCA C? Because you noted about the two thirds, Robert's rules of order note. It was just curious about like the the number and and the representation. And then the second question I had, I was looking in your your board notes regarding the version of Born a Crime. I know that there are two versions that exist out there. The original version of Trevor Noah and then a YA young adult version. I just couldn't tell from this, these notes, which version you were using, adopting.
I'll double check.
I'll double check for you, I'll bring it in.
But it's a great novel, I really appreciate it, but just wanted to know that difference note.
Do we know exactly how many curriculum council?
It's sixteen. I think it's fifteen or sixteen.
I can also, I can double check that for you as well.
It'd be great just to know the makeup and and like even the numbers, I don't have to know like who's on it. But like just in general, in terms of the, when we think of of those participating and if there's ever a need for
We do have a teacher from every site, an administrator from every site, a counselor from two of the sites. And we have a parent from three of the sites.
A classified.
And a classified staff.
Thank you for that. Much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. And I had a question about the macroeconomics class. Is that like a database class, like where you'd be running aggression, regressions that against data? Or is it like, what's the lens of that of that class?
So yes, you know, it is. So as trustee Rhodos mentioned, there's micro and macro. And so part of the council's discussion were some of those very questions that you're asking in terms of what do we want our students to focus on? And yes, it's going to be comprised, it's based on college boards outline and curriculum and will teach to the test. It will shift away from some of the concepts that are taught currently in economics, college prep. But again, students would have the choice of one or both. And then coming down the pipe in a couple of years is going to be the emphasis and the shift towards
Financial literacy.
Financial literacy and and course requirements that
And when you say it's a shift away from, you can like, what is, what is it shifting?
Well, there's aspects of financial literacy, say, in an economics CP course that there won't be as much time to spend on in macroeconomics, for example.
And I guess I'm more directly, my, the reason I asked about it was data. Or is it like the, is the course about the social impacts of macroeconomics? Or is it about the data and actual analysis?
It's primarily the social. But they will focus on some data components.
And so how do you make the decision on who does that and how do we know what that looks like?
Who do you mean, what do you mean for who does that?
So you're saying more of the social, so it sounds like it's a social lens of macroeconomics, not a not macroeconomics in the sense of here's the data, here's the numbers, here's what's going on. And correct me if I'm wrong, when you're saying social, it's more about here are some policies that may have impacted different groups or whatever, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We can get you the course description from college board. It is not developed or designed by anyone within the site or district. So it is going to be curriculum that's pre-approved from college board. And so we can provide the board with a course description as well for you guys to review prior to voting next.
And when you say, I'm sorry, what is college?
So advanced placement courses or AP.
Yeah, so it's all from, I got it.
Right, it's it's pre-developed. And so students at the end in May take have an opportunity, they don't have to take the test, but an advanced placement test aligned to the course. If they get a three or higher in that advanced placement test, they have the opportunity to get college credit. And so AP or advanced placement is falls under college board.
And I can give you a course description of econ and then AP macro, if you wanted to kind of look at both of them side by side.
I'm less, I'm actually just more curious about the econ class, like how much of it is about social justice and how much of it is about data crunching for macroeconomics, which is more traditional and typical. And so do you know roughly like what what that is?
I don't have the breakdown. Michelle said we could get the the units. They go into great detail in terms of the unit breakdown and what they cover and what texts are included in those.
Great, thank you. And then also for the novel, see, like, how does, how do the novels show up? And then it's just one novel. Are there categories of novels? Do we get like science fiction and and other other novels recommended, like where's the shoes?
Yeah, the teachers bring novels they're interested in to curriculum council that they want to implement in their curriculum. We have one this semester, but we have all next semester. So each we bring, from starting this year, we're bringing items to the board each semester. So this is just first semester's work, there will be other novels coming next semester that teachers want to bring.
And a lot of it is based off of the thematic kind of nature of the course. So for example, a tenth grade English course would focus primarily on identity, say, for example. And so a lot of their novels outside of the supplemental novels might focus on that as a, as a theme or umbrella topic.
So more memoirs, I mean, that's where this comes in.
And they collaborate a lot with our teacher librarians in terms of bringing in novels that are high interest, novels that are reflective of our student body. And then again, novels that are covering topics that may be really relevant in the times or relevant to the lives of our students.
And so, so then again, so this one novel from the teacher, so where does this show up? Or this, this one in particular is for identity?
This falls into a tenth grade unit. But we have a full list of novels that we've already approved. Over the past few years, we've brought a lot of novels in. So yes, just one right now.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, you'll see them trickling often versus come in big groups because teachers like to refresh with what they teach. And so occasionally they will reexamine what texts are we teaching? Is there a better one? Or can we switch it up? And so, yes, each district and site will have a lengthy list of novels that have been approved for teaching purposes. But new ones will trickle in over time to balance those classics that we all get taught in high school.
The reason I bring it up, what I've noticed in participating in class too, everything seems to have a social bent to it versus like there's just like almost in everything. So I just hope that you're keeping a balance too of other things. I'm not seeing that so much, especially when I see, like this was, I actually saw there's a podcast with diary of a CEO who's an English podcaster, Trevor Noah, who's really good. And they were, I think, were talking about this novel bit. But on the other side too, like I would like to see her continuation of other things as well. Like I don't think every single class has to be a social identity, social politics class, and it seems to be showing up absolutely everywhere. And so when I see, like, we give our section, like novels that we just select one, right? It's like, why not science fiction? Why is there not other things that are in there? So
Would you like to see the novels that that each grade level is using? We can provide that as well, because it'll show you a range of novels.
Yeah, that would be great to see.
Entire board, that'd be wonderful.
Yes, but that's great feedback and certainly it gives, you know, anytime we get that type of Yes, but that's great feedback and certainly, um, it gives, you know, anytime we get that type of feedback. It gives us an opportunity at the sites and within departments, particularly English. To take a look at the novels that they're having students read to make sure that it is balanced in terms of even, you know. Science fiction versus, um, historical, nonfiction, you know. Making sure that we have a balanced genres as well. Um, but I definitely think after seeing Michelle's list, you'll see that. Probably the trend that you all, all are seeing in terms of novels being presented over the past couple of years. Long overdue in terms of some more modern selections that, um, were more representative of, of the students that we were teaching. Also, you know, as a former tenth grade English teacher, it was all, uh, very boy heavy. So that was something that we had to look at when I was teaching of, you know, we have novels that have male characters and, and male authors. Where are our girls in this as well? So ongoing conversations, ongoing reflection. And always opportunities for us to find new ways to reach kids.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to fifteen, uh, discussion action items. Uh, so first one is, um, appointment of board representative to various organizations committee for twenty twenty five.
We shared this list at the board previously, and they entered their name in the committees that they want to represent. Where they want to represent the board, uh, committees for the districts and for, uh, community partners. And I see that we have members, representatives in all of them. But I have a question of the first one on the list, which is the S R C S Committee for Cultural Equity and Belonging. Where I have a board member Rhodos as an alternate, okay, but we don't have a member.
So I'm happy to step in to be a member, um, of, uh, and in partnership. Um, I just wanted to elevate that, recognizing we are one governance board member, because we, um, without. And so will there be a re-return? I guess that's my question of looking at the committee structure when we have a new. Okay, great. So we will be a team together. I'd be happy to step in, um, to be the lead and then, um. And trustee Rhodos will be the alternate, and then we'll reassess when our. Yes, to share the wealth. Yes, thank you.
So any, any other items or things to bring up or changes on, on this? I know we're gonna have to revisit this when we get, um, our other member as well. Um, I would like to see, like, either of you.
Oh, sorry.
The E two.
If they're sorry. I looked into the heads up committee and I would like to, uh, serve as an alternate.
I'd like to see if we could get an alternate to for the effectiveness, the efficiency and effectiveness. To E two, um, that one's just sitting as with no alternate. That would either of you be interested in that or we can bring it up with.
Uh, I'll, I'll serve on the effectiveness and efficiency. Serve as an alternate.
Thank you. Any other items on this you want to discuss or bring up?
See that, um, don't think there is, uh, some.
I think it really comes to play when we have our new governance team member, but in the spirit of, of, of teamwork. Um, at least in the interim, I'm, I'm happy to step in to be an alternate for our D L A P committee. Cause I see that there's no alternate listed. So just in case, um, uh, trustee Rhodos, you know, I mean, we have a conflict, et cetera, again, I'm super team, right?
We will have to communicate with Cecilia to have translation for you during those meetings.
We can work on that. I, 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 um, but I just want to at least have an opportunity to be like, I mean. Mismoles mas o menos, like it's good enough, um, and I can make it work. But, um, in this, in the spirit of making sure that we have an alternate listed, um, I, I would like to, to put my hat in the rain to be an alternative to support trustee Rhodos.
I will be making that stage to this document and sharing it with you.
So does that mean we have to make, um, an action?
We need to, to vote for.
Was there anything else noted for?
Do you need an alternate for the, um, student superintendent student advisory council?
Um, no pressure, um, trustee Rhodos or other trustees, uh, because it's still, we're still building that. And so that's still, um, a, a formative space, but I'm always looking for another supportive.
You know what?
Teammate.
Spirit of super team. So I'd like to put myself, um, uh, Ms. Prado for, uh, superintendent student advisory council.
Okay, you're in.
Awesome. Anything else before, um, uh, by the V P, uh, corner, anything of note?
Yeah, can I get a, well, nothing else. Um, can I get a motion to, uh, approve?
Uh, motion to approve the appointment for the representation of committees.
And a second.
Okay, uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, no abstentions or objections, uh, this passes. Okay, moving on to number two, um, Centerfell City Schools Information Technology A I Task Force.
Hello, happy.
Hello, hello.
Nice to see you again, um, trustee Rhodos, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Just a comment, so great to see young people, um, doing service and getting involved in local government, so. I'm really excited that you are with us, um, on our board. So tonight, um, I will be sharing some information about our upcoming artificial. Uh, intelligence task force that's starting next week. I'm gonna be sending some information out to our, um. To our participants this week, so that's gonna be exciting. So the goals tonight are to share, uh, what we are going to be doing. Um, I'm also going to share the current deliverables and goals and outcomes that are slated. I am also going to be looking for feedback from the board, um, regarding those outcomes and deliverables. So we are in alignment, making sure that you are getting what you need, um, and the focus, um, of what we want. Um, to come out of this task force. Okay, all right. All right, so, um, earlier this fall, I put out, um, put out the word. And so our, uh, task force is a great diverse group of different folks. Um, so you can see we have two district administrators, we have three site administrators. We have six parents that represent the elementary, middle and high school. We have seven certificated staff members of different types. And was looking at, if you recall in the fall, I was like, oh, if we can get five or six students, wow. We have twelve students that were really interested, so hard to say no, um, to a student. So, um, we have three middle school too, so I'm really excited about that. Um, and then nine high school students as well, and, um, both high schools are represented, um, currently on that as well. Um, we are gonna do this in a virtual meeting format, just for the sake of making sure that everybody can get here. Um, they are gonna be an hour and a half, so we are going to be definitely packed with, um, information. We have four sessions. Uh, we do have an opportunity, if needed, to add a fifth one. And whether that looks like a subgroup or whatever, um, but that is currently, um, what we have slated to happen. I am doing the next slide. So, um, as far as our task work and outcomes, right, we're gonna be aligning ourselves. So there's gonna be education and so there's gonna be common understanding about what is artificial intelligence, right? Examples of what that looks like within the K twelve realm, um, building conversations about, um, the graduate profile and also the workforce, right? Current and future, um, we're gonna have those discussions with those different types of stakeholders in there. Um, it's going to be great to hear a teacher perspective. It's gonna be great to hear a student pers- perspective and a parent perspective. And so really bringing all that together, so we can really come to a consensus about how we, um, view, um, this technology. Uh, in our schools. And then, um, in addition to that, the idea is to develop some guiding principles. Um, based on, um, on group recommendations, um, for new trustees. So as far as deliverables, um, these are just some specifics about, um, what guidance might look like. And so I also just wanted to define what guidance is, just so we're all on the same page, right? So guidance are a set of high level principles based on a particular subject. So we may highlight aspects of that subject, right? So academic integrity might come up, right? Safety might come up, those types of things. Um, but these are the general areas that we are gonna be talking about and that will likely organically blossom. Um, it is not meant to be mandatory for staff. It's meant to be informational. It is to also provide best, um, uh, possible recommendations and next steps for the board or for a district. Or for a site or a classroom teacher to consider moving forward. So just so we're aligned on that. Um, so we would be, uh, presenting a, uh, a guidance document currently. And then we would also have a presentation, hopefully it'd have more than just myself here, of course, um, highlighting our experiences, um, work. And then presenting that at a, you know, what are recommended next steps are. Usually these are documents that are anywhere between two and four pages. If you kind of look at current guidance that is out there, just for a general reference. So how does this align with the current work and the current things that we have going on in Centerfell City Schools? So, um, profile of a graduate was mentioned earlier, and yes, so this definitely aligns with that. In keeping with this vision of when we have students going through our K, our T K five, six, eight and nine twelve, right? What does that look like? Um, obviously community engagement, which is a great thing as well. And this also does align with the digital literacy plan four point four. Um, it was decided that we are going to start with the A I task force versus starting with the digital literacy committee. So a digital literacy committee would be like, think of that as like the big umbrella. What is the nature of digital literacy? A I is an aspect of that. This was determined just because of literally the explosion and the need, um. To have this conversation sooner than later, since the tools are out there already. Um, there's some other aspects that, uh, digital literacy is explained here, uh, as well. So in giving you that kind of high level, um, looking to answer any questions tonight. But really, what input, if you have any, um, do you feel with regards to this group? That, uh, is coming together, that you are looking for, um, for us to, to be able to share and, uh, bring forth? Um, so any feedback on the current things that I've shared? Any additional ideas or insights that you would like to see from our group, um, or different areas?
So in my spirit, I believe that A I is a tool. I believe it's the next internet. I know that there was a dot com boom. I think there's gonna be an A I boom. So in the spirit of, are there in additional areas or deliverables you would like to address? Um, I believe that it can be used as a tool for higher learning. I believe that there are students that are overachievers and how can we use A I to accelerate their learning? In my, in my own learning, I, I learned Mandarin from chat G P T. So how can we use this as a tool to further accelerate these students', uh, academic achievement? Basically, I believe that A I should, is a thing that takes out the busy work. But should also be very much used to enhance critical thinking. So just a focus on critical thinking, what do you put into the A I? So it gives you the best answer. Cause if you just put gibberish, you'll get gibberish back. So two things, uh, how can we accelerate overachievers or how can we use this as a tool? But more so for overachievers, for them to keep accelerating at the pace that they're at. And how, how do we, how do we continue using A I as a tool to enhance critical thinking in the classroom? Um, so we have more philosophical, fi- philosophical thinkers in our classrooms and more, um, in-depth, uh, thoughts coming out of our students.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, I agree. Um, when we talk about critical thinking, um, what does that look like when you're integrating or using a tool? Um, not only as an educator, but eventually within the context of a student using it, um, for classwork or homework and that type of a thing. To your point, accelerated, absolutely, um, but also thinking about all students, right?
Yeah.
No matter where they're at, how that, how this technology can help all students, but yes, thank you.
Awesome. Uh, thank you for the breakdown in your earlier slides about the participation. And I know that it was a very like intentional recruitment of getting the word out there, because it's just complex. Like A I can be scary and to be able to like distill that, to get that much student participation and pair it like across the board. I just want to applaud that. Right? Cause like, you just don't put a call out. Like it was very intentional. I could tell from you and your team that you really wanted, um, solid representation. In this, in the spirit of that, just, um, a clarity follow up. So when we're talking about the, not we, um, the, the guidance, uh, is it? I think of like different levels of guidance when we're coming back from the recommendations. And is it guidance on A I policy or but rule, whatever it may be? But for, as like a section breakdown for students and a section breakdown for how district staff utilize it. For their professional development, or is it also like, you know, how, um, teachers would use it in their classroom? Just a little mu- muddled about like if there's gonna be like a tiered system of like the guidance.
Yeah, and you know, it can look really so many different ways. It really depends on how we, you know, as we come together as a group. How we want to approach it. I will show some examples just to, you know, but at the end of the day, we will do what we feel is best to communicate those needs. Um, again, guiding principles would, uh, yes, we can talk about the staff, um, definitely student focus as well. So staff and students would be included within those guiding principles, right? So for example, we might say something about, um, academic integrity, right, is a very common one, um, that comes up. It might be, um, considered a higher level, how we might word it and phrase it under a certain category. But right, how do we make sure that staff, for example, are being transparent about how they feel or within their curriculum or syllabus? What that rule of an A I tool is, right? Or what is the responsibility of a student, right? Are they adhering still to the academic integrity policy that already exists? So we're not really necessarily looking to create new policies. It's actually been recommended through various, you know, laws, firms that, you know, you hold. Of course, it's up to a district. Only because there's so many laws and things are changing so rapidly, but we can look at existing policies as well. And see if we need to update any verbiage. We need to add some clarity for parents and staff to understand that as an example. So, um, yeah, and I, we can, I can always like do a mid-report if needed.
You know, that, that would be appreciative, because it's very complex. I mean, I mean, I'm one of five on this governance team, but I, I know that I'd appreciate it. Um, then to, uh, to dovetail on trustee Rhodos' comment regarding, um, will there be like a? Uh, guidance or at least sharing of like what specific like, uh, A I programs or would like, there's chat G P T, et cetera. But like, is there one that's the district will recommend? I'm just curious, like, you know, there's, will there be like guidance and, and research upon that? Sorry.
No, absolutely. No, so in that guidance document, we would not necessarily cite specific, specific examples. Um, we can discuss about those types of schools moving forward. Um, and we can say, for example, um, it's recommended that, you know, San Rafael start reviewing or evaluation. Or have an evaluation committee or some sort of process, right? Much like any kind of technology, um, in order to understand what is best suited for a particular grade level, sites, et cetera. Yeah.
And then will these meetings be recorded or were there any participants that, um, were Spanish speakers at all? I was just curious about the makeup of your.
I currently do not have anybody that I'm aware of that, um, is in need of secondary, um, language translations at this time, so.
And then my last note, and I apologize for the delay in this, um, we attended the California School Board Association Conference. And I know that that's probably one of your resource, um, places and spaces, but I apologize for not sending it out. Like we learned a lot, um, about the California School Board Association statewide task force, and I'm sure you gleaned into it. But just, just to like, just to, um, I will formally send a, a note and then also to my fellow trustees. I had uplifted it at our December meeting, but, you know, holidays, et cetera. But I just want to say thank you for your diligence, for you and your team about the different types of research. Cause what I really liked about the California School Board Association A I task force work, the same intentionality you had in recruitment. They already had pre-flighted some scenarios that they had done with their, um, legal team. That could be of best use for when you're navigating the, these conversations with our community members and staff, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually I do have a C S B A article that is designed for board members and I'm happy to pass that on to you.
Yes, please.
And it just gives you kind of like a high level, um, gives you maybe very broad examples. But just, it gives you some questions, uh, to reflect on as a board, um, so that could be helpful for you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, uh, thank you for the putting together the task force. I, I really think the task force is important for, um, kind of the on, like it changes so much, so this ongoing, um. Like updating and understanding what's going on and how we can continue to roll this out into the school. Um, with that being said too, I'm, I'm curious, our. With that being said too, I am curious, do you know if the students now are being talked with about AI in general? Like especially kind of at the high school level?
So right now, the, the current policy or the kind of the general stance is that staff, I'm really advocating for staff to feel comfortable to start experimenting and using AI tools for their own work and productivity. So I went on a roadshow in the fall, I let them know about some available generative AI that is available to them on our network. And so because this is new, there is no formal, you know, professional development or anything that's currently in place. But that is kind of that step, so we can get there. So I'm hoping for the second half of this year, we're going to see continued learning from our district and our site admin leaders. So like, right, the goal is, if you're a district or site admin, understanding this tool yourself. So then how do you see how this can be applied with your staff? Once we get past this guidance, right, and our task force and our recommendations, then we can talk about what that might look like in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with regards to using it with students, educating students or students literally using those tools within the class, the frame of a particular class, depending on what that teacher deems that they wish to do, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. The one thing I will say about it, like AI is moving super fast and it's changing all the time. And so I think there would be a great advantage of, if there's a way to pilot something or start something sooner or later, would be wonderful, just from the standpoint of it'll be a little messy maybe, but you'll learn from putting it out there. I think, I basically look at the chatbots as it's a, you know, it's a really smart tutor that you have. You don't have to go on Preply or something like that and get a tutor necessarily. You can resume like Gemini, if you can get the paid service of Gemini two now, it's way better than the ChatGPT chatbot, which like always punches out when I talk to it. But the Gemini one is amazing, like they made big advancements. So you can basically sit at home and you can ask questions if you want to do it verbally, or you know all this. And so it's, so to me, I'm looking at it through the lens of an assumption that, well, one, I think if kids don't know about it, they should know about it, we should, they should be talking about it. If they do know about it, we should assume they're using it. And therefore, that immediately affects the dynamic of teaching or grading, I would say. So not, so homework would change as well. If you're expecting them to do the homework autonomously, they will not. There's just, it should be assumed that they're not. And then if, if they're not, then how do we change the grading? Like the way that we do grading in the class for writing to a couple of examples. I'm not trying to solve the problem, but just like in writing, you know, you could, they could practice all they want, they could like fake essays, but then you have to put away your computer and write in the class for, you know, an essay that's, that's timed. Or when you're taking math exams, they're probably already straight, I don't know if they're on their computer or not for all the exams. You know, they may have to go or analog or printout, right? I don't know, I don't know what that is, or at least you're cut off of a network when that happens. But so task force, great. I think I, anything we can do at all, like to just like start the conversation so that maybe a couple of excited teachers or like talking to other teachers getting like, hey, I learned this. Like can, can, you can do that too, or here's how students are learning it. So there is kind of a play around and break things, which I would encourage. If you're, if you're not already doing it, that would be a great thing, I think, to add to this. And as this is getting off the ground and moving, because I, I am concerned about waiting too long for policies and ideas, like that's kind of a slower moving machine. It's a great machine to, to keep the conversation going. But if there's a way of, of like getting some early things in, then that would be a big one. So that's my feedback.
Thank you. So to your point about the mention of like piloting or tools, just to give you additional information. We have elementary digital literacy coaches, these are teachers that are paid to stipend. And so they are able to do some support and certain things, and they also share information out to their school sites. And we also have high school digital literacy coaches as well. And so I have been engaging with both of these groups, I facilitate these, these groups. And so a lot of it has been talking about AI tools, experimenting, highlighting it. And so we are starting that, the message has been out there, exactly that. Experiment, play, share, collaborate. So that has been messaged clearly to all the districts personally by myself on that roadshow. So yes, there are definitely things out there, and we definitely have staff that are starting to engage. And then we have those that are dipping their feet in, and then there's those that are still kind of learning. And so yes, how quickly we can get things going, absolutely. And then also to your point about what that looks like and how that's going to change necessarily the paradigm of what happens in classrooms and how you are approaching those gradations or assessments or those teachable moments. How are you integrating, teaching that in order to support the critical thinking that trustee Rhoda was actually talking about? Because there's some really wonderful things that can occur with that proper understanding of that mindset and how that might look as we move forward with these technologies.
Very good. And if you spot any like this, there is a spark of a teacher or a group of teachers excited about it. Welcome, bring them in and share what they're finding like that, as much as we can get it out there, what's happening, that would be wonderful.
Point of personal privilege, Vice President Kerner?
Excuse me?
Point of personal, point of personal privilege, I just wanted to ask you your name one more time.
Oh, Kristi Novak. Yes, C H R S Y, O C K, not A K. And so just to confirm, you feel comfortable with the deliverables, the deliverables, right? So like a, like a guidance document that might look like? I can always give you a little mid kind of update about what we're thinking that might look like format-wise, if you'd like. But that we would be doing that, and then we'd be sharing that presentation, and that this is guidance, that would be informational. That's good.
I, I think it's good for the committee, I would love to get additional, like, or just like in, like for the task force, like that's great, the deliverables on it. I would love still to see the, like, anything that's moving faster, like some kind of feedback or.
Okay, or just like examples of maybe what might occur.
Yeah, I don't know if we can plug everything into the task force. Like the task force is, is a way to, like, you're gathering consensus, right? It's like, how do we get all the non-consensus stuff that we're just going to throw out? Or however we do it, right? That we can get moving faster, like how will we have some deliverables around that? That may not be outlined in this document. So I would love a follow-up of additional things if it could happen outside of, outside of the task force.
In terms of the formality to confirm, you know, the, the guiding principles or the outline that you just laid out for the committee, plus the, the possible mid-update. I would love the possible to actually be a request to have, and it doesn't have to be long, but just in the spirit of like, it's a lot of complexity. And it would be helpful to tee up in terms of like before you do your, your final presentation to us. Or at least that's, there's a lot of information that I just, so I would appreciate that mid, mid.
Mid-March or?
Yes. And then, and then the, yes, I, I want to actually, plus one. Trustee Kerner's request, if there are other some examples that are happening in real time or the pilots, et cetera. That would be helpful information, if not appropriate in this space, maybe in a future presentation.
I think showing, I think highlighting maybe some specific examples of how teachers that are currently engaging in, I think might be a great way to go, so, okay.
Well, it's always those experiences that are, you know, early adopters that are starting to use this in the classroom somehow, that will then inform the guidance and the principles. And like, we need to draw upon examples of things that went right or, or challenges that people are experiencing, right? So you have to feed that committee. So in some ways, we need that sort of advanced team while we sort of bring up the, the, the baseline with this committee. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I just, again, I think it's just some encouragement of like, like, hey, let's do a couple of things and I'm going to check back and see, see what we're doing, and then that can feed like some insights on the committee, so.
I have one more thing to say, and in terms of the deliverables and guiding principles, I would love to follow up on Vice President Kerner's point of what the classroom environment looks like with artificial intelligence and the economy behind homework. So just another.
That will definitely be part of our conversation, for sure. Yeah, that will be part of that process.
So this one, is this, and we, we vote to pass? This is a discussion.
Discussion and asking for your feedback.
Because that give us some, that'll give us a little, this is a big topic. So give us a little time to, to think about it beyond this too, and thank you very much. I do want to, I, I definitely just want to, the committee is absolutely important and vital. It's, it's just, I, that's kind of, like I said, that's the, once that gets its momentum going, that's going to feed like all the continuing education is happening. So it's just, but anything we can grab that's, that's already out there and start putting it in to test.
Definitely running parallel, so I, I am establishing this, but there's also some parallel work that is actually going to be happening and shared with some of our district leaders this weekend.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number three, human resources, approval of resolution number two, two, five, three, six. So placing classified employees on employment list following exhaustion of all leave of absence. Do we have any comments on this?
Yes, if I could just present on this item. So this is, we are requesting your approval. We have one employee in the elementary school district that has been on a medical leave. And they have exhausted all available leaves, and they are still unable to return. Or the district is unable to accommodate any restrictions if there's any listed. Therefore, by the ed code four, five, one, nine, five, we are putting them on a thirty-nine month reemployment list. Their responsibility is when they are able to return or they have a medical note, they reach out to my department and submit that. And then if there is a position that they are holding, that they've held before is available, then we would offer it to them. But it would be, the onus is on the employee to let us know when they are able to return.
Okay.
I will need, requesting approval of this one.
Great, thank you. Trustees, any questions or concerns?
I am sorry for the circumstance that this employee is facing, but that's all I have to say.
No questions, but motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. And thank you. That'll be one, number four. Another human resource, resources, placing classified employee on reemployment list. That's, wait, that's for all of them, it's the same.
No, it's a different, it's a different item.
Different item, same, same, same concept, okay.
So similar, this is a high school employee, classified employee who has exhausted all their leaves. So we will be placing them on a thirty-nine month reemployment list, and we are requesting approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to number five, education services. Approval of Terlinda High School Cheerleading Participation and the United Sports Association Cheerleading National High School Cheerleading Championship, Thursday, February thirteenth.
That was a mouthful. So this is for an overnight field trip for our group of cheerleaders from Terlinda High School. And they hope to be joining the San Rafael High School cheer team this year at what would be their national championships, and they look forward to attending.
Fantastic. Any questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns. Motion to approve Terlinda High School Cheerleaders' Participation at the United Spirit Association Cheerleading National High School Cheerleading Championships.
You had to do that.
Enthusiastic, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I think you're doing the next one too, so. Approval of state travel for San Rafael High School Administration, Principal Joe Dominguez, Assistant Principal Ken Morales, and Assistant Principal Shannon Herby, if I'm saying it right, and another staff member to Phoenix, February eighteenth.
Yeah, so this is actually in partnership with a consent agenda, consent agenda item you guys passed. That was for ten teachers from San Rafael High School to attend a very similar conference, really focusing on professional learning communities. So they're excited to bring that work up, and this would be an opportunity for the administrative team to attend that same conference but over midwinter break, so that all the administrators are not gone during a week in February. And so they are asking for that approval in order to, to really grow their collaboration and think about how to best serve students.
Great, thank you. Any questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns, motion to approve.
You got to give, oh no.
We're good, that's, keep the ball rolling.
All right, motion to approve.
Yeah, very good.
Motion to approve this item.
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. You're still here. Number seven. Approval of memorandum of understanding between Bahia Vista Elementary School and American Scores Bay Area for Aftercare and Recess.
Awesome, so this is yours. So America Scores has been an organization we have long worked with here in SRCS, but not in this capacity, which is why we are bringing it to you this way tonight. And America Scores does soccer for students, but they also weave in poetry. It is a very popular program in our after-school programs, and so we're actually really excited to try this version at Bahia Vista, where they would be coming in and basically supporting students in doing soccer at recess. And then having an extended soccer team as well that would happen on Saturday, so for game day, Saturday. So we're really excited to bring this support in for our students and also see kind of what it looks like and frankly, how much fun the kids are going to have, see what this looks like. So we're excited to have this at Bahia Vista.
No questions, I'm happy to see that. I do believe that it's on-the-ground work, and I'm super excited to see what comes out on the Saturday games I hope to attend one day. Pass it on to.
I mean, I would love to see trustee Rhoda get in there and some of her practices, but hey, you know, that's just my request. But very excited about this item. Vice President, no?
No, no questions or concerns, thank you.
Great, you want a motion?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
They're here, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you. Okay, item eight, business services, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four annual financial audit report.
Yeah, so as you know, each year we bring the unaudited actuals to the board in September. And then those unaudited actuals eventually get audited by an independent auditor. We use a firm called Nigro and Nigro. Every district is required to have an independent audit of their financial. So we do that for both the elementary and the high school district, as well as the capital facilities bond program as well. And so this is the twenty-three, twenty-four financial audit report. Clean audit, as usual. We did have some small findings related to the interpretation of some expenditures in, or some programs, really more about program in the ELLP, after-school intercession program that we are still sort of working through with our auditors, because we don't necessarily agree with their interpretation. And the reason that we are doing that is because there is a fiscal penalty to some of those. And so we're, we're trying to work through those findings, but not to cloud the overall clean audit for both the high school and the elementary district, as well as our bond program. So I don't know if you have any questions or.
One question, I would love to see the follow-up on this, and I hope it all works well in the interpretation. Comments, I'd love to hear the clean audit.
Great, yeah, I'll keep you posted about, you know, how successful we are in our reinterpretation.
There we go.
Any questions?
No, actually, I just want plus one, because that was going to be my comment about a follow-up regarding the reinterpretation, thank you.
I don't have any additional questions, I hear a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the, the clean audit.
Yep, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to item nine, um, is this you, Austin?
This is also me.
There we go.
Board of Education, San Rafael Elementary School District and San Rafael High School District. Same, uh, annual developer, oh no, sorry, different, regarding accounting of annual developer fee report and five-year binding.
Yeah, so per the California Government Code, um, annually, we, at the, at the close of every fiscal year, each district that collects developer fees, and a developer fee is collected when um, a developer or even just a homeowner is uh, applying for a building permit, whether you're building apartment units or whether you're building something larger than five hundred square feet as an additional dwelling unit or something, you then need to provide some fees to agencies like school districts, um, like um, the city, um, public works, things like that, right? So that they can then use those fees to mitigate the growth of population or traffic or whatever it might be, um, because of your development. And so we are required to provide a report that shows how much developer fees, you know, we took in for that year, what some of those fees were expended, what is our ending balance moving forward. Um, and, and so that's what, this is a uh, one and uh, five-year report. Every, you, you, every year you do um, your annual report, but some, um, periodically you do a whole five-year report, and that's what this year is. Um, what can I, what else can I tell you about this? One of the reasons that we were trying to be very thorough about this report is that we, as you, as we've talked about before, we're trying to line ourselves up to be, continue to be eligible to receive those developer fees at the time of application, as opposed to um, what has been suggested in some new state law, which is that you collect those fees after the construction has occurred and it's at the time of occupancy. And our position is that as a district, if we have, uh, you know, a hundred fifty units coming online within our attendance area, we need those developer fees upfront so that we could then prepare for the students that are generated from that development. So, um, we are trying to cross every T and dot every I in terms of our developer fees, um, so, so that we can, um, you know, continue to, to claim that we are eligible for a waiver from any new laws moving that collection date. We're also, one of the other things you approved tonight was contract with a firm called Koppel and Gruber. And they will be doing a developer fee justification study for us, which essentially looks at our, all of our capacities, at all of our school sites, um, as well as our enrollment trends, as well as new developments that are coming online. And um, you know, allows us to adjust our fee, um, which gets adjusted by the state, usually gets kind of ramped up a little bit each year. Um, we'll be adjusting our fees so that we could collect a little bit more in anticipation of some pretty major developments in San Rafael.
Good, any questions?
Um, no questions, this seems very interesting, please let me know how I can be useful as a board member, uh, in terms of.
For sure, yeah.
No questions, you know how enthusiastic I feel about making sure that we are eligible for that waiver, so.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's very good to have that up front. No questions for me, thank you, uh, for your work, um, motion to approve. Uh, motion to approve, uh, resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five dash thirty-two.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, um, and now moving on to our final item, approval of a receipt of donation, very exciting, these are always fun.
Yep.
What's going on this time?
So this time around, we've got um, a good amount of donations, it looks like we've got five unique donations. Excuse me, one of them is to Terlinda High School by, from the Pasha Group. Um, and that is for, um, to be spent toward the Applied Arts. That's two thousand five hundred dollar donation to Terlinda High School. Uh, we have two donations to Davidson Middle School, we've been really trying to highlight the funds that are donated from our um, parent organizations to our schools. So we've got five thousand dollars from the Davidson PTO to the music department for uh, instruments and supplies. We also have a, a donation from the sports basement of three hundred thirty-eight dollars. Uh, looks like it's just earmarked for general expenditure. And then to San Pedro Elementary School, we have a donation of five thousand dollars from the Charles and Barbara Goodman, um, from Charles and Barbara Goodman. Um, if you don't know, Charles Goodman is the gentleman who donated um, much of the funding to support the CTE shade structure at the back of, um, Terlinda High School. Um, he is very uh, big in supporting um, school's rule. Um, so, uh, you know, great, great family, um, donation to San Pedro. And then also to San Pedro, we have two hundred dollars, excuse me, just from the multicultural Center of Marin for funding the Dia de los Muertos altars, two hundred dollars there. So a total donation this evening, bringing us in at thirteen thousand thirty-eight dollars.
Fantastic, thank you, if you're, everyone, or if you're on the call still, doesn't look like many of you are, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to approve and accept.
Uh, happily motion to approve these donations.
And happily second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, and we do not need to re-adjourn for closed session.